Evening and welcome to Chaska City Council Meeting for Monday, March 21st, 2022. We'll call the meeting to order at seven o'clock. Will you please stand and join me? Pledge of allegiance.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for that. We've got a busy, busy agenda tonight, so we are going to get going right away. Elise, will you call roll, please?
Councilmember Hatfield?
Here.
Councilmember Hubbard?
Here.
Councilmember Wong?
Here.
Councilmember Grau?
Here.
Mayor Winchell.
Here. We moved item four, adopting the agenda. Before we adopt the agenda, I would like to move item eight F to eight A. I know that we've got a number of residents here. I'd like to move that up, otherwise they're going to be sitting through a lot of things. Sorry, developers, but residents went out on this one, so we'll move the residents up and get through the street reconstruction for this year's project. So I would like to make a motion to move eight F to eight A, please.
And to clarify, because we had changed the agenda this morning, so eight A is the street reconstruction, followed by the ward boundaries, then the Chaska Creek Industrial, Skonse Woods, Rivertown Heights, and finally Hazelton Plaza. Correct?
Correct.
Okay. All right, I second the motion.
All right, so I have a motion of second to adopting the agenda to move eight A to, or eight F to eight A. Any other? All right, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Carries. All right, we move on to visitor presentation. Is there anyone here for visitor presentation other than agenda item? I don't see anything, so we're going to move past that. Next would be approving the previous meeting minutes from February 28th. I was going to ask, what happened to March 7th? They just didn't get in there? Okay, all right. So we're just approving February 28th, so I know we were back to back there and maybe something happened there. But so, again, if there are no corrections or additions, I'd entertain a motion to approve.
Aye, move.
Motion by Councilmember Hubbard?
Hubbard.
Second. Second by Councilmember Grau. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries. All right. Moves us to consent. These are items that need our approval, but not necessarily a conversation, but any and all can be pulled and discussed at any point in time. So with that, is there anyone that has anything that they'd like to discuss regarding consent agenda, or I would entertain a motion?
I have one item to discuss briefly. I'm not going to formally pull the whole item, but I like to make a few comments on seven A, which is the final site and building plan for two twelve medical center in Ridgeview. So first of all, I'd like to thank you guys for making the change to the parking structure, making that opaque. Appreciate it. I think the residents will too, should it ever be built. Also, I'd come on the fifth floor lights. While no usage is planned after 5:00 PM today, I also understand that things may change, the usages may change over time. So is there any way we could formalize that, that's, you know, to, you know, give the homeowners some comfort that, you know, six months from now, oh, there's a building change that at, you know, at dusk hours or after business hours that the lights wouldn't necessarily be on, you know, for those homeowners? The last comment is that, you know, it's more of a question to, more of a question to staff and Ridgeview of like, there's like, there's a note about mitigations to Hunter Mark that proposed for future traffic improvements, and thus generally I'm in agreement with those. I think the question was is that when we would expect that to happen, because it seems like it's tied into phasing of further developments, but want to get a better understanding of when that might be.
Yeah, so the, we did the traffic analysis now, not necessarily thinking that this particular addition was going to trigger it, but basically the traffic study that was done indicated, you know, sort of what level of, of usage you'd have to have at the facility to be able to trigger those improvements. So what we wanted to do is to say, let's define those and, you know, that usage number now, so that when that happens, that becomes something automatic that happens instead of having to go back through the whole process again. So I don't remember the exact number, but it's triggered to a specific amount of traffic usage coming out of the facility.
Yeah, it's most likely once they start looking at the addition to the north building, when that starts getting triggered. Depending on the use of that final floor on the south building, you know, may or may not need to get in that. I think the important thing is that as part of this process, we will be getting into an agreement with Ridgeview on how those costs would be shared when that does occur. Very much like we've handled Southwest Christian High School and the changes that need to happen at their entrance, it's very similar approach to that.
So how would the volume measures be done? Because, I mean, if, like, for example, like, there could be like internal rearrangement of the building that would increase use, but that wouldn't necessarily bring it back to council because it's, you know, internal rearrangement that's driving.
I think some of it's also going to be driven by if we start to see issues up there, we'd put traffic counters out.
Okay.
Because I, what, I mean, I don't want to take this too far, but there's already signals, there's already turn lanes, there's double turn lanes of forty-one.
Yeah, there's more improvements we can do.
Is it in, out of, coming out of the parking lot or on the Hunter Mark?
It's coming out of the parking lot.
It's at that access that Ridgeview has, that there's some changes that can happen to the median that exists on Hunter Mark today. There's also a little bit of kind of restriping and reconfiguration of how the lanes go through that intersection. That would gain some efficiencies, but you're right, I mean, there's only so much that.
I was going to say, there's only.
But there are some things you can do.
Yep. So I think the only other items, you know, just the way I mentioned about the fifth floor lights, that, you know, some sort of like, I know, not, some sort of support for, you know, ensuring that even if the, you know, even if the, you know, Ridgeview would, you know, come forward and say that, you know, we're going to commit to doing this on the record, that, you know, we'll make sure that the lights are turned off at five PM. Because right now, that's what's there based on the current usage, but, you know, that's, that's my, my only comment, is that.
Are we talking about the lights on the inside of the?
On the inside of the building, the fifth floor, because it's a large glass area.
See, they had talked about the windows to the, what I'll call the east.
Yep.
Would, that they would not affect residential because it's a eight to five, that room, or that area is a eight to five, so it wouldn't affect it. So it basically said that the lights would be off at five. Councilmember Wong is asking is what happens if that use changes? Then does that, I mean, is that one of those that we wait and see that it becomes, that, that it's there to say, if that happens and it becomes something, do we re-talk that? I don't know how you would put anything there that can.
My, my gut tells me, I mean, with just speaking out from the top of my head, is that you'd probably have to talk, if there was a change in use, about some window treatment with the windows to actually deal with the opacity, opacity.
Opacity.
Opacity, whatever.
Very technical term.
Yeah.
Or like.
Of the, the lights. I mean, that might be a way to handle it if we're going into an agreement, is just to say if that did change and lights had to stay in after that, that we'd have to come up to some type of an agreement on how opaque it is. I, I guess off the top of my head, I can't think of any other way to address that.
I guess maybe the, maybe the request is that to look at it between now and the final, so that way at least it's addressed in some, in some way.
This, this is the final.
This is, this is, sorry, yeah, never mind. So, but I mean, but I guess that's, you know, where that's kind of like, okay, how do we make sure that there's some reassurance for, you know, for people there?
I, I would say let us talk to them about that and come up with something that we just think is getting in the tent of what you're talking about. I hate to define exactly an answer right now, because I have a feeling we're going to come up with the wrong answer. But, but I would think you guys are fine with sitting down and just talking about what makes, what makes sense with that.
Yep. Because presumably if there's anything changed here, that we can always like provide some revision or some other thing later, but, you know, I'd still like to, you know, know that from a residence perspective, because, you know, we've all got to live with it, you know, everyone else there heads home. So that's a different story when it's like your bedroom or your living.
The chances are if it becomes an evening type thing, it would go both ways about probably not wanting things coming in too. I don't, I mean, I don't know what the usage would be, but, so there maybe would no coverings anyways.
Yeah. I, I think it will just come up with a better, I mean, I think we all understand what, what you're getting at. I mean, I think we'll just come up with a better answer to it if we just sit down and just sort of talk about how to address that.
Good. Okay. Yep. Okay, that's all you got.
All right, anyone else? I'd entertain a motion to approve consent.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Wong.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hatfield. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries. Who's the item eight A, which is adopt resolution twenty twenty-two dash thirty, public improvement hearing for the twenty twenty-two street utility reconstruction project.
Mayor, Councilmember.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Mayor, Councilmember, the item in front of you tonight is the proposed street reconstruction program for downtown for this summer. Just one thing to point out, this is one of the last streets to do. We only have a little piece that's over here and then around City Square West, which we're purposely waiting until we do that project to do that, so we don't tear it up when we're doing work over there. So things have come a long ways in, what, twelve years, you know, eleven years? So it's, it's been a long project, almost thirty million dollars in downtown, but I think that the downtown, especially after forty-one gets done, I think is, it looks very different than it did.
It's very different.
Before, so and I think it looks really nice. But Matt's here to, to talk about this. There was a neighborhood meeting that occurred about a week and a half ago, and there were some residents that showed up for that, and Matt can just generally talk about the, the project and what's being proposed.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Hopefully you can see my screen. This year's project, again, as Matt had mentioned.
Matt, you're going to really have to speak up or get your microphone there. Thank you.
Yep. Fifth Street, Beach Street, and the block of Oak Street, which you can see in red. The project's really broken into two phases, more for, you know, street reconstruction as well as residential access throughout the development. You can see, like Matt had said, the map shows kind of all of the streets in gray, the ones that we've completed throughout. It's been a long road for the last ten years. This year's project, no different than any of the other street reconstructions, includes the replacement of all new utilities. So new sewer, new water, as well as new residential sewer and water services. So all of the property owners that are along or being affected by this year's project would be included in the replacement of sewer and water services up to the right of way. We do have a number of kind of unique properties that are along, kind of on the north side, where we were, we're also treating those very closely as what current uses as commercial property, but is zoned as future residential. So just simply replacing back what it is that, that currently exists. In terms of, you know, overall utilities, this would be what council's very familiar with, which was be kind of that overarching full replacement. So all new, you know, everything from all new sewer, all new water. It's very impactful for some of the residents that are along here, but much needed improvements. We do have missing links in downtown where, on these, these streets in particular, where water main currently does not exist, and some of the properties are very difficult to serve. So by doing this project, it will greatly enhance things that exist in the neighborhood. And so really no, no major changes from what folks are familiar with. Offset from the exhibit, you can see kind of where my cursor is. I've considered, we're considering this as kind of a, an ancillary project, an offset or a spur, that really wasn't a part of the city's downtown street replacement program, but was coming out of the street program. We have identified different trunk utilities, and one of the trunk utilities that we have programmed in downtown involves the decommissioning of one of our lift stations near the Hardee's location. So offs, you know, kind of on the left side is, you know, again, this is more of a CIP project, but I thought it was important that the council saw it as a part of the feasibility study, that those improvements are really, and really came out of the city's downtown implementation plan to allow the city to, to abandon one of those, or decommission one of those lift stations. The improvements really involve the extension of a trunk sewer that was started way back when on First Street, that happened on Oak Street. And so we've kind of, you know, for the last, I hate to say this, seventeen years, we've been kind of, we've planned for this decommissioning as part of the overall, you know, utility layout and schematics in downtown. That being said, I'm going to try and move my cursor here.
So before you go any further while you're talking about that, do we have to, are we talking, we got a bore under sixty-one and go there? Is that?
Part of the sixty.
We're making that connection then.
Yep, yep. So actually, part of the sixty-one project includes putting in utilities that would help serve underneath sixty-one, and then, you know, we have the ability to connect on both sides. It's really a timing issue for us with sixty-one, which is why really from a feasibility standpoint, we're recognizing it, but it's not really part of the overall downtown program. It really begs the question of, can we, from a timing standpoint, pull things off to allow that work to happen this summer? Because we are planning to close sixty-one from Walnut Street to forty-one in late June, early July, so after the Fourth of July. So really, we're, we're, we're still on track to maybe get this work done this summer, but it's one of the things we need to be paying attention to, especially for, you know, Yellow Brick Road being one of the detours or local detours for how folks will navigate through downtown. So we're, it doesn't have to happen, but it is something that at least we're, we're implementing or looking to implement this summer.
The one thing we don't want to have happen is us being, doing something construction-wise on the detour. So Yellow Brick Road will be the detour. So basically, the message to Matt Hafner has been, you have to get this done by the end of June or else it can't be done this summer.
Okay.
And if it isn't done this summer, then we'll have to do it next summer.
I mean, this all makes sense, you know, because we're eliminating a lift station. That's huge.
Well, and it's also, it, it's the one that happens to be the one you see all the pictures of, like, weekly, some towels and stuff coming out of. It's, it is a trouble lift station. So it'd be good to abandon it, but, you know.
So we're saying we would start that project early before the construction.
Yeah, the only way we can do that this summer is if we, if we do it before that becomes a detour. If it doesn't, then we just have to live with it for another summer.
Okay. I mean, like I said, it makes sense because the connections down here is, you know, I say to tear up a new street that you just fixed, so.
Yep. Council is aware, we do have the proposed residential properties that are coming in along Maple Street. So part of this year's project, again, we would be providing utility services out for those new properties, so that if, when, the, the housing does come in, no different than in new development, that utility connections can just simply be made and the housing just.
Which two new properties are you talking?
The five units or the.
Oh, those five.
Four proposed lots on the old park.
What are we going to do with that fifth lot?
Yeah, I was going to say, does this.
Still not yet determined.
Does this commit us to having five lots there by doing this, though?
We can, no, because we can make a, we can make a separate, what's going to determine the four or five lots is going to be your final approval.
Right. So this doesn't, that was one question I had. I saw five lots, and I was like, I just didn't want it to in any way commit us to putting five lots there.
No, what you're looking at really is, this is the feasibility. The decision remains with the city as to how those lot configurations are, as well as the plating. So, you know, with the street plating and things that will be coming, one of the, the things that we'll be working with the developer on is how much right-of-way is needed for the street. When old downtown and eighteen, you know, the old plats of eighteen hundred, right-of-way dedication was not necessarily the, the norm for streets. And, you know, part of this new development will, will require some dedication for streets, or at least for Maple and Fifth.
I mean, I, I think that lot is feasible if you just got a little creative. I mean, but I suppose once we have, we have to lay our road out so they know where they're at.
I think that's a bigger issue.
Right.
Well, I, like I said, I, I just want to make sure that we weren't fully approval of the five lots, and then they come back and said, you took a lot away, and then we got to buy a lot. And I, I just want to make sure that that's being talked about, and you already got that in place.
We're planning to be able to serve it, but what's going to determine what goes there is going to be your guys' final approval. Just because we plan for it doesn't mean we have to make the connection.
Right. And this map was really even out when they made this, showed the road. I mean, the road is there.
All right. One thing that was shared at the neighborhood meeting, and knowingly there's some folks in the audience, the, the process has not changed and it is not changing from what it is that we've done in the past. The, the opportunities for folks who do have poor sewer and water services that may exist along the corridor, we would still be offering that same program to have additional work beyond the right-of-way done for sewer service replacements. The water is treated separately because we, you know, in downtown, we do have a number of properties that have difficulty with their sewer services. So we do offer an additional cost to the residents, which is just merely a pass-through that we contract as a part of the work. We secure a price before the project happens, and whatever the pricing is that the city receives for work, additional sewer work beyond the right-of-way, we pass that through to the property owner, and it is a elected option whether to, whether they choose it or not. So that is still in place. I would say the uniqueness to this property or to this project is that there's a number of the new housing, what I call relatively new, is in the early two thousands. There were the handful of properties that are along Sixth Street, and those properties did receive some upgrades. So utility-wise, there was a new sanitary sewer line that was put in place back when the development happened, as well as, you know, sewer and water services. The water main at the time was not replaced, but is being replaced as a part of this project. The sewer main is not. So those four properties that exist or that are along Beach Street, or Sixth Street, I'm sorry, they would, there would be no increase, there would be less impacts to their property because their services are relative, are new. We would just be simply hooking back up what's there. And we'll talk about it a little later, is that those pass-through costs or at least a portion of that work, those properties would be credited as a part of, when we get to the assessments. We're not talking about them this evening, but it is something we're at least recognizing that, how we're treating properties for those that are being impacted with the project.
But we've had properties like that in almost every, all three years of this I've seen.
Yes.
Yep.
Where they, they don't, we don't want people to have to do it twice.
Right.
Right. I think that covers the utilities. Again, one of the things that was shared in the feasibility is we do have all new streets. So with the new streets come new underground storm sewer. We have, will be implementing the, the city's last, one of the last stormwater treatment facilities in town. We have six in total for treatment devices that the city maintains throughout, as, you know, generally where the, the drainage goes and things into Fifth Street. The balance of, you know, the, the overall streets, because none of the streets now have curb and gutter, is that the, the storm sewer would act as that new capture treatment and discharge areas, so that things just don't sit as they do today. I'm going to zoom in here, as this is, seems to be some conversation. Hopefully, I'm going to do my best to see if you, everybody somewhat see that. In looking at the, the street design for this year, really the intent was and has kind of always been in downtown is to main, or streets, maintain the existing footprint of what the existing streets are today. What you see, and I'm just going to talk through Sixth Street and Maple Street, is that Sixth Street from Beach Street over to what I'm going to call as the, the school district or the school center, Sixth Street Bridge, is being designed as a thirty-two foot street, thirty-two foot wide street. That is our standard residential street throughout the community. It allows for parking on both sides. Maple Street, as well as Fifth Street, would also be designed the same way, sixteen feet or thirty-two feet in width, which, again, parking both sides. I would say Beach Street, and I'm just going to talk through that street just generally, folks who drive it know that it's a hybrid situation out there. Beach Street really kind of has a unique flavor to it. What's being designed is a, a hybrid street that would transition from a thirty-two foot street down to a twenty-two foot wide street that allows for two-way, two-way traffic. It's very tight, it's very narrow. We did go through and we've kind of worked through public works with this, and this is what we feel is best to maintain, at least through that section. Going east, or I'm sorry, going west of the Sixth Street Bridge, really maintaining what exists today. No major changes in terms of the footprint, maintaining that two eleven-foot lanes, maintaining a parallel parking or perpendicular parking option for the school, allowing for parallel parking that, for the two residents who live kind of next to Oaks, Oak Street and the bridge. And then, again, just maintaining that perpendicular parking and diagonal parking that exists kind of near the Auburn Manor facility for how they operate today. I would say we are working with the school district on options for them, just to flesh out kind of how their operations exist today, with how busing works and some of the facilities that happen there with folks who come and go throughout. Is there a better parking arrangement for them? We'll be working with them over the next month or two to come up with some different scenarios, but this really puts back kind of how things sit today. And then Oak Street, again, between Sixth Street and, come on, Matt, Fifth Street, putting back, because of the sewer depth and the, the trunk sewer extension, and the limitations of the right-of-way, again, just really putting back what exists today. It's a twenty-eight foot wide street today. We put back as a twenty-eight foot wide street, would have parking restrictions, parking one side, which is how it operates today. So that really goes through the streets. The sidewalks that, again, we're moving into that unique area, is what I would say, very similar to what we had last or two years ago with Willow Street and Seventh Street and some of those streets, where all of the other streets in downtown that we've reconstructed had sidewalks, these streets do not. And so really looking at how that neighborhood connectivity happens in the context of how this. in the context of how this, you know, how folks really navigate the streets today. Sidewalks are proposed currently along both sides of Sixth Street, from, connecting from Auburn Manor, Park and Ride area, all the way over to the Maple Street intersection. Again, part of that involves some connectivity between things that the city has planned over the next two to three years, which we have the Circle the Brick Trail, we have the Regional Trail that will happen from Athletic Park all the way over to Stoughton Avenue, so making sure that there's a, a connection there for these, for these residents. Park and then sidewalk is also proposed one side on Maple Street. It is proposed what's currently on the park side. That being said, is the reason for the part of the sidewalk being there is it really, the street is offset currently today and the road is being put back very closely to where it is today. And the sidewalk is generally just outside of the footprint. Putting aside, or providing two sidewalks, when staff looked at it was really, it became very somewhat invasive to those folks who live along that block, really putting sidewalks kind of out in their front window and driveways being relative so close to the street that we felt that at least providing the connectivity from ma, from Sixth Street down to Stoughton Avenue and to the Regional Trail was, was the intent there. Because of that very same thing is looking at the disruption and just neighborhood context is Beach Street, given how it operates today, we are not proposing or is not proposing at this po, this time to have sidewalks on Beach Street, as well as the block of Sixth Street between Maple and Beach. I would say that Oak Street, one of the things we are working with Auburn Manor, as well as providing some continuity for a sidewalk that would kind of parallel the, the western side, sorry about that. The western edge, really to bring those folks who use, there is a kind of a, a meandering sidewalk through the Auburn Manor facility, but then providing just that sidewalk connection to get folks up to the Regional Trail and to the Park and Ride along Oak Street. That takes care of, really, the information that was kind of the, the project in and of itself. In terms of the schedule, this year, what council's seen is we, we did share the feasibility study. Tonight, we're hosting the public improvement hearing. We did meet with staff, or staff met with a good handful of neighbors two weeks ago, I, my dates, but we had a very good turnout. Not a lot of comments. Overarchingly, I think most folks had the comment that says, boy, we're the last ones. What, why'd it take so long? But that was really what we heard for comments. We heard that, we have the public improvement hearing tonight. The next step for us is really if the council is ready to move forward with the project, is we would authorize, council would authorize the improvements. Staff would then start the preparation of construction documents and we would order the assessment hearing, which is the action item on for this evening. The assessment hearing would be set for April eighteenth of this year, which really is that last step in the final approval process for us. We do have kind of that early spring startup construction. We'll be working with residents to set up neighborhood meetings, host those outdoor events where, once we have a contractor on board and we've taken bids and we understand kind of the, the overall timing is to meet with folks and have those neighborhood meetings where we're sitting down and having those discussions about driveway impacts and sidewalks and how things will fit, as well as how it is the contractors planning to approach the project, which phase they would be first, how to get in and out of their driveways, where the access goes, and those types of things. So, those would happen really in that April-May timeframe. And then, obviously, the, the project in and of itself is planned to be completed yet this year. We would have all of the utilities done, streets paved and sidewalks in yet this year. With the final lift of, you know, final block top lift, which is something we always typically hold off on, which would happen next year. Overall, project costs, same thing that was shared with the council, is we have Phase One is what I'm gonna call everything east of Sixth Street Bridge, which is Sixth Street, Maple Street, Fifth and Beach. Total cost of the improvements, streets, storms, sewer, water services. The total project costs are three point seven five million. Phase Two, again, these are just for breaking out the project. Same thing, streets, storm sewer, water main, water services, sewer services, two point seven, which totals about five, about, close to eight million for just the base project. Part of the things the city has budgeted in the CIP is that there are improvements that we talked about for the trunk sewer. And so, looking at those with some of the decommission costs, some of the street replacement costs, it's about nine hundred thousand. Total project costs, again, we've talked about that, six point eight four one million. One of the things we did share or that we always typically share in the neighborhood meetings is how we're, some of the assessments that are being programmed. Again, staying true to what it is the city's done over the last fifteen years is residential properties are all treated very, or treated the same in that there is a seventy-five hundred dollar assessment for each individual residential unit or residential property in downtown. There are a, a handful of, those are all the street, the, the yellow ones. There are a handful of kind of the commercial use properties that we did go through again and have that consultation done, which is that special benefit analysis that the city's done for years as we go through and look at the benefit to each of those properties. The four properties that I had shared previously, the discount to those properties, again, is in the fifteen hundred dollars, which is really a percentage of the overall, what, if you, reducing the over, the, the cost of the improvements for the sewer and water services, it's about a fifteen to twenty percent credit that those properties would receive for work that really isn't being done for, for their properties. And then we obviously have the, the last piece of the Auburn Manor that's remaining. So, with that, I think if there's any questions, that takes care of most of my things. I did share, I would share one last thing is, you know, we did kind of walk through this exhibit, which is that tree inventory exhibit that council's seen in the past where, you know, Public Works goes out and we do an assessment of trees that are either A being are, have issues, whether it's structural or diseased trees. We have a number of trees being impacted with new sewer and water services, just due to the, kind of the, and then we also have some sidewalk areas, which in this case, this year's project really doesn't have a, a ton of impacts. So, that is just something we do. Again, tree plantings and things are all a part of the project. It's something that Public Works comes back and does a reforestation program that would occur next summer. And Brian does a really nice job in, in working with, controlling that process with Public Works Group. So, I think that covers it. Questions?
So, um, on Sixth Street west of Maple, there's gonna be sidewalks on both sides?
I'm just gonna pull that up quick.
Heard it in the map, I guess.
Looks like this. Yeah, so.
Yes.
And I feel like things sit really close to the road on that part of Maple, between the bridge and, or on Sixth, between Maple and Bridge. So, like five twenty-three, Maple's not gonna.
They would, again, the road in and of itself, the footprint of what's out there today is not changing tremendously. The addition would be that five-foot concrete sidewalk that would happen. Again, we'll work with those folks to understand kind of what that means. That property, we'd have to look, we're gonna look at pretty closely in terms of where their.
I feel like their house is really close.
Yeah, it, the garage is really the on-street parking.
Yeah, but I feel like even the house at the corner there, I feel.
Yeah.
But I, yeah, so that was one that I had. I wanted to make sure I understood that. And then Beach Street is getting, so basically there'll be no parking, there won't be room for parking anymore on Beach?
We, we would not sign it that way, just because Beach Street really doesn't serve the, you know, a lot of cut-through traffic. If it became an issue, then we would sign it.
Okay.
No sidewalks on Beach Street?
No.
Right. Okay, then you answered my tree question, so I think that's all I had.
Okay.
I was just making, I felt like the, between Maple and the bridge, I feel like things are, even the businesses on the other side, I feel like are close. But if there's room, there's room.
Alright, anyone else, questions for Matt? Alright, we will go ahead and open the public hearing for the public, or the downtown street reconstruction utility project. We'll go ahead and open that up at seven forty. Is there anyone that would like to speak on behalf of the street and utility reconstruction project? Last call. Gotta take her. Would just need your name and address, please, for our records.
Redheadman, five twenty East Fifth Street. I'm right on the corner there of Beach and Fifth. One of my questions is, is with, with the new sewer coming down, are they gonna be tapping into where they blocked it off in front of our, our house and tie into that and dump into the creek on the east side of Beach Street?
Matt?
Where they ended, that, that tar is already starting to crack and it ain't even a year old. So, I, I, I think they were planning on tying into that and reopening that.
That's a good question. We are, the sewer that, you know, the, the sewer that exists along Beach Street, we would be starting where it is that we left off when we built Stoughton. And then we would obviously be continuing just kind of towards, what you can see is the last residential property, kind of on the, the left side, the five twenty-eight home. So, yeah, we would, we'll come back and we'll be replacing that. If it's, if there's cracking or damage there, we'll be, we'll be fixing it.
Yeah, 'cause I, I know they went a little further to the west and they were.
We did.
Just to cap that, 'cause the storm sewer came up and then they capped it there.
Mm-hmm.
So, I was just wondering if you're branching off on that and going up and around.
We'll be taking off of what's there. Yep, yep.
Thank you. Anyone else? Comments, questions? Hello?
Hi, my name is Barb Moran. I live at five oh seven North Maple Street. I am on the curve and my property butts up to the creek. I'm a little white house, a rambler, built in nineteen fifty-five. And I appreciate, I think the first time I heard our streets were gonna be improved was two thousand nine, so I knew it was coming. And I do appreciate all the improvements. And Matt, you did a wonderful job at our neighborhood part, um, presentation, so I was very appreciative of all the information shared. I would like to ask if I have permission to speak about the property across the street. It's my understanding, what you just said, you're deciding tonight if it's gonna be five or four houses?
No.
No.
No, I, I think, the only thing we do in here is, is we make sure that we can serve things, but the final determinations can be made when that comes back through the plating process. So, if the council decides they want it to be four, then that's what it'll be.
And we have two more steps than that.
Yeah, it, it's only been the concept so far, so there'll still be preliminary files. So, nothing tonight is gonna, is gonna determine that.
Okay, I didn't understand that.
Yep.
Is the public still involved when you make that decision?
Yep.
Same, same thing, it'll be open and.
Alright, thank you.
Thanks.
I don't know, they would be notified because they're in the area.
Yeah, what I don't know is if it's even been resubmitted yet.
Nope.
Yeah.
And you can always, if you have comments now, like before it's resubmitted, before preliminary, you can always email me or call me too. You don't have to wait for that necessarily. You can always contact me.
Thank you.
But the fact that it hasn't been resubmitted yet means that it's at least, at least probably May, if not June, before it would be the soonest that you'd ever see the preliminary come back. 'Cause it always has to be submitted a month before the meeting.
Yep, May would be the soonest. That's assuming that they submit by the beginning of April.
Yeah.
Well, we've heard, I haven't heard, I don't know if this has.
I haven't heard anything, so I would be.
This is also a big timing thing with this construction going on. They really can't do much till we get that done and, or, I mean, some of it they can, but, yeah.
Yeah, you know, the very first meeting that.
You'll, you'll have to come up here because we can't hear on TV then.
The very first meeting that we had and we were over at, you guys were over at the center and I was actually on Zoom that night. I asked the question about how that was going to, how those two projects were gonna come together and you just didn't know then either.
Yep.
So, I, I kept that.
Yes, they, they, they have to blend at some point.
Right, right.
And, you know, if they haven't come back and resubmitted their preliminary, I don't know if that, they're relooking at it. I don't know, I don't know what that means. You know, generally, this is the time people are, you know, it's go time. But then again, they know that this construction's gonna happen and that kind of limits what they can do. You know, as soon as we know something, we'll know more. At this point, we don't know where they're at eith, either.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, anyone else? Alright, I'm gonna go ahead and close public hearing at seven forty-six. And at this point, if there are no other comments or questions from council, I would look for a motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty-two dash thirty.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Hatfield, second by Councilmember Wong, adopting that. Again, this is pretty much the same since two thousand ten when we started about how we're assessing people and I think people are seeing the benefits of what's happened from it. And we as a city, I think, are seeing the same by how people have now fixed houses up, fixed yards up and done a lot of things, so it's a, and it is kind of the final stretch. So, it's, it's, uh, it's been a big project and a long project. So, thanks everyone for patience and appreciate it, so. Right, with that, any other comments? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same side. Motion carries. Alright, thanks folks for being here. Alright, we'll move to eight B, which is adopt ordinance, ordinance ten, twelve, adopt, men, chapter two, article sections, Article B, section ten and twenty, the Chaska Code of Ordinances, ward boundaries and polling locations.
Mayor, council members, every ten years, each governmental unit from federal on down to local has to go through a process of redistricting, based on census results that are done two years prior. So, we did just receive results this past year from the two thousand twenty census and one of our obligations as part of that is to make sure that we're basically creating as much balance as possible within each of the wards that we have within our jurisdiction. So, we did receive from the state of Minnesota, their completed redistricting process at near the end of February. Local municipalities then have about a month to go through the process and determine by the end of March what those new boundaries will be, if there needs to be a, a change and then from there it goes on to the county. I'm gonna have Nate just talk real quickly about the things that we looked at as part of this. I think at the end of the day, the objectives that, that were set, were, were trying to create as much equal. First of all, you try to create as little change as possible. But then the, the second thing is how do we make sure that we're creating as much equal representation as possible, especially for some of those underserved populations within the, the community. So, Nate can talk to that as well. So, Nate, I'll turn it over to you.
Sure, thanks Matt. Mayor, council members, as Matt has already. Sure. Thanks, Matt. Mayor, councilmembers, as Matt has already, uh, introduced to you the process and why we're doing this, um, you know, every 10 years with the census. I do want to recap with you what was shared at the work session when we went through this a couple of weeks ago. Starting out with the objectives that, that staff used, um, to come up with the, the boundary, uh, changes that we are proposing. Um, first off, that we're looking to have population sizes within the wards be as equal as possible. Um, there is opportunity for some difference, up to 10%. Um, we do use that, knowing that some areas of the community are going to be growing quicker than others. And so we focus those deviations, um, on those areas where growth is expected, anticipating that it would catch up, um, and become more close to equal as the decade proceeds. Uh, we do have the objective of keeping the four ward system, uh, within the city of Chaska. We do keep ward boundaries as logical as possible. That's an objective. Uh, we also look to keep the number of precincts required in each ward as low as possible. So you might have more than one precinct in a ward where you have a legislative district bisecting a ward. That is something that is possible to do, but we try to limit that because it does add complexity to the election process when you have multiple ballots, uh, for that ward, um, needing to be administered. Something we've done before, and we can certainly do, but we do try to limit that. I want to avoid drastic changes that significantly impact residents in a negative way. We also want to promote more council member representation by having multiple wards represent downtown. Uh, we have two there, Mobile Home Parks, there are two in the community. Um, and then also Jonathan Neighborhood Association, which, with it being a very large neighborhood association, attempting to have some representation in each ward of that neighborhood association. And then also making sure that we have options for alternate polling locations in each ward, recognizing that things can change with any of these polling locations over time. We do rely on partnerships with, um, primarily churches, um, and they do have the ability to, you know, make, make their decisions on how they want to use those facilities. So sometimes, um, things change and we need to look for alternates. We want to make sure that we've got options for that. So the existing wards today, this map shows the existing wards as they stand today. With the primary thing that is not being met of the objectives that I just went through, being the population sizes within the wards, um, are off balance, and so you see with Ward Three, um, has about a 12% difference as compared to Ward Two being the largest presently. Um, and so that would be outside of that 10% difference, and so we are in a position to need to rebalance. The draft wards, as we presented them at the, uh, work session a couple of weeks ago, are, as displayed here. As you can see in the graph below and the population, uh, balances that occurs, we end up having the largest ward presently, being Ward Three, um, anticipating that the le, the least growth of the wards in the future, um, would be in that ward. Recognizing that, uh, the most growth potential is in Ward One. We set that to be the lowest populated ward, uh, presently today. Again, anticipating that it would catch up into the future as population grows and new neighborhoods are added. Shoot, sorry, okay. Um, back to this one. I do want to point out some areas that have changed as pre, as compared to last, last time. So you see, this portion here is presently in Ward Two, would get moved to Ward Four. Uh, that would be the Brooks Ridge neighborhood. Uh, there's a com- portion up here that is currently in Ward Two and gets moved into Ward One. Um, and that's to make sure that we continue to maintain that population balance that we're after. And downtown presently today, um, follows, is it Maple Street? I always get the.
Walnut.
It's, uh, Walnut Street.
Walnut Street, sorry. I always know it's a tree. Um, so Walnut Street, so.
Hope downtown is a tree.
Oak, Maple.
They're all, they're all tree streets.
Take your pick.
Um, so Walnut Street, which is one block to the east of 41, is the boundary between Ward Three and Ward One today. It ends up getting moved to, um, 41 or Chestnut Street as it goes through downtown. I got that tree right, I'm proud of myself. So you end up having a more even split through downtown as it pertains to the commercial district in particular. So you end up having the east side of Second Street is an example in Ward Three, in the west side of Second Street, on Ward One. So here you can see, uh, that comparison of the changes, um, up, up here, uh, this portion here, and downtown, as I mentioned before. You also can see there's some changes in polling locations that we are proposing to have. Um, so Ward Three, uh, as it presently is, Church on the Hill is the polling location for that. We would propose to move to the Moravian Church for that polling location, which then allows us to move what is currently Ward One's, is the Moravian Church, um, over to the events center, um, so that you have that polling location continue to be within that ward's, uh, location. Another thing of note is, um, Church on the Hill has made some changes internally, uh, to help serve what they're doing as a church better over time. The consequence to us of that is that it has, it has altered our ability to really have a successful, or, you know, a well-run and well-organized polling location in that location. Um, they've added some walls and things that just kind of hinder that circulation that we used to be able to achieve in the past, um, which makes it a less desirable location. Um, the other two, uh, polling locations would remain the same, uh, with Christ Victorious serving Ward Two, and the community center continuing to serve Ward Four.
We should point out that all of these changes, anybody who's impacted by any change, including, you know, if there, if there were change, which there's not very many people that, that ward changed, but there are quite a few people whose polling place will change, that they'll receive a notice, uh, in the mail indicating that they, their polling place has changed.
That was one of my questions that I was going to ask, is just like, I get, I'm glad we're sending a notice, but if we, I want to make sure people know where to vote. That's always something we want to be really careful about. It's almost more of a campaign surrounding.
Yeah, that's.
The fact that this has happened.
There'll be the notice right away that we do, just to make sure that people are aware right away of the decision, but then we'll do a campaign as it gets closer to the elections, just to make sure that people are aware of that.
Yeah, we've done that in the past too, where we've got a, um, a mapping application that we'll put on our website and try to promote that, so that people can check in and actually put their address in and see where, you know, what ward they're in and, um, you know, the polling location that's associated with that, and so, um, those are things that we've done in the past, but I think we need, you know, obviously we'll need to have that focus on, things have changed a little bit, um, this time around, so that people can be educated about that as well.
And I think this has actually gotten better, but with the movement of, but do we consider like the accessibility of these polling spaces? Um, like to me, I think Ward Three is, honestly gets a little bit better, that maybe some transit prohibitions, you know, it's more walkable to get to this location, but do we consider that when looking at these polling places that we're ensuring they're accessible?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, from an ADA perspective, um, you know, we need to make sure that our polling locations are ADA accessible.
Well, and that gets, even gets into the type of equipment we have to provide too. So there's special polling equipment that we have to provide, and, you know, if for some reason somebody just couldn't get in, for some reason, we have provisions for all. We actually come up to their.
For curb side, yep.
And just even, I'm even just thinking about how people move around the city and get to where they need to go. To me, like I said, Ward Three almost gets a little bit more accessible. There's more people down in that area, so you can walk and.
Do we put additional handicap parking? Because I think there's only one or two in that area. Do we put additional? Or?
There are, yeah, there are requirements on the, for the election day that, um, there is, you know, adequate handicap parking. I guess I can.
I mean, I'm not worried about the other two sites. I just know this one.
Yep.
Doesn't have that, that much as far as handicap parking.
Yeah.
Maybe like we could sign it out front, so.
Yeah, and, and that's what we've done in the past, is they put temporary, uh, handicap, uh, parkings.
Not to get too much in the details, but come, you know, come next election, you know, if there's a line, is there going to be someone that's in the line saying, this is the precinct, you know, this is the ward, you know, so that way the folks aren't waiting in line, and then when they get up to the person, they realize they're not even at the right.
Well, typically what, typically what we have in these polling places is that we'll actually have a table up at the front for people to be able to check before they even get in line.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, good.
So that's actually a role.
That would be my only thing, would be they wait in line because they're used to voting there, and then they get all the way up to the front, and then they're like, what? I gotta get in my car.
That's actually a role, uh, um, there is a designated greeter judge.
Greeter judge.
Okay.
And that's part of what their role is, is to make sure that they're facilitating that, but yeah, that's a good point.
Great, good.
All right, anyone else have any questions? Say, you know, I, like I said, we went through this quite a bit at a work session, so this is just really, uh, officially turning our, uh, how we, ours goes to the county, right?
Yeah, so, so we, we have to make a decision in March, and then, uh, the county gets it, and they have to make their decision by April 29th. Because they, you know, if you think about it, primaries are not that far away. And so, you know, the county has to be ready to, to act on those primaries.
So that means that, you know, there's also that notification to the residents of which ward, so what's the timing of that?
Well, we send out a notice right away, once a decision is made. Uh, that's something that Denise, uh, does. But I also believe that the county will end up sending out some kind of a notice too, because there, there more than likely is going to be changes in commissioners' districts too.
So they'll get basically sent by mail to all the different ad, so all of our addresses?
Yeah, that, the polling place gets determined by where they're at in the city. And so getting that notice from us really makes sure that they get to the right polling place. What the county notice is going to do is it's just going to say, once you get to that polling place, who are you going to be voting for?
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, like, this goes back to what, you know, we're kind of discussing, making sure that, that notice gets them, because some people like, you know, like, something gets misdelivered in the mail, or they just don't get it because it got stuck, stuck under a stack of papers and stuff, and they still show up at the wrong place because that just happens, right? So, yeah.
It happens. It's just unfortunate that, you know, when we go through the census and you have to make changes, it, you know, because that, I can guarantee you, there are people that will get the notice and just probably don't read it.
I was just going to say, or they just on autopilot, you know? They're just, they're used to something.
So I think, I think it's important, important as we approach the elections, that we talk about it.
Yeah.
I know that there'll be, I would venture that there'll be a lot of it this year, just because of the census change.
Sure.
You know, governmental-wise, there'll be lots of that, checking polling places, and then, you know, that's when you put out the interactive map stuff, so.
Well, and, I mean, one big change in Chaska this year is, is at the state level, is that we have two representatives now, where in the past we've only had one.
It's really worth mentioning those two, those that are listening, as we did go over this in a work session and scrutinize the lines and kind of play with it too, so it seems like we're not asking a lot of questions about exact lines. We did have a work session for that, so.
And contextually too, just to make sure what's clear that, you know, in terms of like, the, your comment about us having two different legislators from the state, that wasn't our decision, that's something that came down from above, so all we're doing is just aligning our ward boundaries.
Well, and, and even above that, our congressional leadership has changed too. We went from, uh, being sort of on the northern fringe of Representative Phillips' district, now being on the southern fringe of Representative Emmer's district. But yeah, that, each jurisdiction does their thing, and then we get it passed down.
And the last step is the county?
Yep.
No, I also want to kind of comment on, I've had some conversations in the last couple of weeks with some of the, um, some residents from here or neighboring communities in regards to our ward system just in general, and I just want to touch on the fact that today, while we're making this decision, the, um, ward system's in place, from my understanding, through an ordinance, and that's something that, even though we're passing this or we're going to vote on this tonight, isn't something that has to be brought up 10 years from now. That's something that can be discussed at really any point in time, but I think the important thing with that is that it's, um, a community-wide discussion, you know, because that's, that is very impactful for, for, um, the community as a whole.
Oh, because there's, there's pros and cons to both.
Right.
And, and I think, you know, we've had discussions, I, I mean, I think about over the last 10 years.
About four years ago, we had.
We had a similar discussion to that about should we be at large versus be a ward system, and there was this sort of pros and cons discussion of that. We've had discussions about should the mayor's term be four years. We've had, you know, and to me, uh, one of the things that I think is important if you're going to have those discussions is that you're tying a community survey to it too, a statistically sound survey, because, you know, the last couple of times we went through those discussions, it came back pretty overwhelmingly that the residents are just like, hey, if it's not broke, don't fix it. Um, but you could have people looking at it and say, no, we just don't like this at all. And then that would be a good community conversation to have, but making sure that you have open houses and surveys and those types of things to make sure that you're really getting to understand the voice of the community. But that, that discussion can happen anytime. The only thing we have to do with redistricting is making sure that we're keeping the wards, uh, balanced.
Equal, yeah.
And, but also that we're not putting people in situations where, you know, all of a sudden you might have, uh, an area that might have a higher amount of minorities, so all of a sudden, you know, the redistricting impacts their ability to have good representation. And so, um, you know, tho- those are important to make sure that you have, uh, uh, taken care of during redistricting, but the other discussions can happen at any time.
Right, good. All right, anything else? Not a, uh, entertaining motion?
Oh, so moved, I'm sorry.
Motion by Councilmember Hubbard.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Grau. Again, this would be, uh, adopt ordinance 1012, amend chapter two, article eight, section 10 and 20 of the Chaska, uh, Minnesota Code of Ordinances, ward boundaries and polling locations. Further discussion?
I think the only thing I want to touch on is someone, a couple of folks were really concerned about just certain neighborhoods being diluted in regards to having only one representative being in the ward system, and I, I just want to touch on the idea that, you know, our neighborhoods in Chaska, I think, are a really, um, varied mix of hu- housing in regards to um, different, um, you know, income levels of housing, and I think that's the great thing about Chaska is that there's so much diversity, not only within each neighborhood, but just Chaska as a whole. And I think all of us as representatives, I can't speak for anybody else that sits up here, but, you know, speaking for myself, you know, I represent the community of Chaska as a whole. You know, I have a ward that constituents can easily reach out to me and, and answer the questions, but when it comes to voting and really laying into important topics, every single thing that comes before us is really important because it impacts everybody's life, and, um, I never want anybody to feel like they're not heard, because they are. Uh, and I just want to make sure that that's really clear, um, in regards to myself, and, you know, we have a great community, and where we're blessed to have such a mixed geographic layout of housing and, and folks that live in this community. So I just really want to put that on the record and, and, uh, yeah.
I, I really think the interesting thing about Chaska is, is you look at the map, every ward has some affordability and some very high-end housing. Which, that's pretty unique in a, in a community, especially a suburban community to have, you know, every ward has a little bit of mixture of everything. You know, sometimes you get one that's very concentrated with high-end homes and others that aren't, and it, it's, there's, uh, I mean, we have our two mobile home parks, which in that case, we wanted to make sure that each of them had, uh, you know, their own representative with it, so that you didn't end up having just one representative for all mobile home parks. But that's really the only area that you can, you know, say that you can really focus on like that. The rest is pretty dispersed.
Yeah, I think Councilmember, um, Hubbard was right. I don't, I mean, again, personally, I don't think any of us have ever been like, not my ward, not my problem. Um, when we think about things, it very much is holistically. But then on the other side too, we do get kind of, it's nice to be able to, we know our wards really well and, and can listen to our people, but at any time, anybody could talk to any of us, and we're going to represent everyone the same way, so. That was an important call out.
I mean, I, I would agree, and where we say that, you know, an area has one representative, they always have two. Because I'm mayor, so I'm at large. So I am really another representative for each one of these wards, if someone, and good thing that, that about Chaska is, is it. is it's kind of already been, kind of said here, is, is that this is for the good of the city, even though we have wards. Unfortunately, people look at that we have wards, uh, similar to like, big cities like Minneapolis, they really concentrate and only work on their one area. We don't. What we work on is the whole city of Chaska as a whole. So I thi- I think it's different, but unfortunately, that gets looked at like we're, uh, the big giant city that has multiple wards, and we only work on stuff for our wards and kind of battle in between, but I, I've never seen, uh, councilors in my thirteen years sitting here say, I don't, you can't have that, that's for my ward. Uh, it's always been working together and creating one vote and one decision. I mean, will we disagree? Yes. Will somebody say, I don't agree with that, I'm gonna vote against it? Absolutely. But when we come out of here, there's consensus and we move forward. And I think that's the important part of, uh, as we've gone through some things, uh, we've been through this about whether or not we should be ward or all at large, and like Matt said, there's a million positives and there's a million negatives to, that we can come up with about what's good and what's bad. And so far, it's worked well for the city for a lot of years right now, and, um, I'm comfortable with it. I think it works good. I think everybody gets a representative and you, you always have a second, but when, when most people have an issue, we all get notified anyway. So it's really, you know, like I said, we're not, I, I just have never seen the fighting to say, you can't have that, that's for my ward. It's just not. It's about what's good for the city, so. All right, last call? All right, all in favor, seventy-five, saying aye?
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries. All right, thanks. All right, we move on to, uh, eight C, which is adopt resolution, am I, yeah, twenty, twenty-two dash twenty-three, and ordinance one thousand nine, approving preliminary site building plan for Chaska Creek Industrial.
Mayor, Councilmember, this is an item coming out of the Planning Commission recommending approval. Uh, this is the, uh, area that, or the, the next industrial or planned industrial building in, uh, the Chaska Creek Center. So it'd be, uh, located just to the south of the one that's currently being built by Opodin and just across from Creek Road. So I'll turn this over to Liz, who can present this to you.
Thank you, Matt. Thank you, Mayor and Councilmembers. Uh, we have a preliminary site and building plan, preliminary plat and rezoning request this evening for the project known as Chaska Creek Industrial Phase Three, which is being proposed by Opodin. Uh, so to quickly go over the planning process, we're at the second step of our three-step process, so this is the preliminary step, which involves a little bit more detail and technical analysis, uh, within this step. Uh, if this moves forward, uh, this evening, they would come back for final, which would be the third and final step. Uh, the site is highlighted in blue on the above aerial. Uh, it's located within southwest Chaska, on the west side of Highway two twelve and then immediately south of Creek Road. Um, there is a ravine system that bifurcates, uh, the area, but a majority of it, uh, where the project sits or is being proposed is made up of agricultural land. Um, just immediately west of this property is residential, uh, properties off of Wetzel Lane, which is a private road. Uh, then we have the Chaska Creek Business Park, uh, just across the street of Creek Road, uh, where Opodin is currently building, uh, their first, uh, office industrial building, and, uh, subsequently their, their second, uh, office industrial building off of Chaska Creek Way. So this project this evening is basically a continuation of those two other buildings that are being built. Uh, so in terms of a background, uh, it was back in two thousand thirteen that the, uh, concept plan was approved for the Chaska Creek Business Park, but which included the two other buildings that I noted earlier. Um, then it was in March of two thousand twenty-one, uh, that the final site and building plans were approved for both of those buildings that are currently under construction and futuristically will be under construction. Um, and those two buildings also proposed by Opodin, uh, were for a hundred and thirty-three thousand square feet and a hundred sixty-eight thousand square feet of building space. Uh, so back in, uh, December of two thousand twenty-one, so just a couple of months ago, uh, the concept plan was approved for this third phase in their project. So now we're moving on to the second step of the process. So just, uh, one substantial change, uh, that was addressed during this preliminary submittal. Uh, due to the proximity of the residential on Wetzel Lane, berming and screening was a huge component of the site plan. So, uh, with this package, uh, that was, uh, supplied, um, for this preliminary step, they did incorporate a berm mostly on the south side of the site, uh, that is approximately twenty feet high, uh, from the grade and up until the very top of the berm, um, as well as, uh, additional plantings, mostly coniferous, uh, trees that are planted on top of that, uh, generally in the eight-foot, uh, tall range. Uh, in terms of land use and how our comprehensive plan guides this area, uh, it guides it to be business park, uh, which the project is consistent with in terms of use. Um, the site is currently zoned rural residential, RR two, and open, um, and it will be rezoned as a part of this, uh, request this evening. So the existing conditions of the property, it's roughly thirty-eight acres in size total. However, the project site will take up about thirteen acres of that total site. Uh, so again, the area that they're primarily engaged with is, uh, the agricultural portion of the property, so they are not, uh, proposing any portion of the wooded area or ravine system that currently encompasses the property. So the current request this evening, um, is kind of twofold, or threefold, I should say. Uh, they're requesting preliminary plat approval, along with preliminary site and building plan approval for the industri- industrial office building totaling approximately a hundred and seventy thousand square feet in size. Just like the other buildings, this is a spec building, so they don't have any end users identified at this time. However, it's not proposed to be a distribution center. Um, it's mainly for an office warehouse-type user. And will be the same setup as the, uh, initial two phases that we approved, um, in earlier years. Uh, the third portion of the approval is for a rezoning request to, uh, rezone the property to a planned industrial district, PID ten, to be exact. So the proposed site plan is being shown on this slide here. Uh, so the building is, uh, approximately a hundred and seventy-seven thousand square feet in size. Uh, it's rectangular in format, uh, just like the other buildings, it'll be the same height as those, uh, ranging from thirty-four feet up to thirty-eight feet in height. It will have direct access onto Creek Road, which would align with the building just, uh, to the north that's being constructed right now. Um, with the, the, uh, proposed roundabout at Creek Road and Chaska Creek Boulevard, um, they will be, uh, tapping into that intersection with a temporary driveway that would be constructed of pavement, but would allow access into their, uh, loading dock area, just on the rear portion of the building. So the loading dock area is on the south side there, so the driveway that would come off of that roundabout intersection would, uh, essentially be that truck access into the sites. And the Creek Road access would basically function as the typical employee, uh, access. Uh, one item of note, kind of during the concept plan, was ensuring that the parking adequately met, uh, the size of the building and uses, uh, that were proposed. Uh, they are showing a parking plan that meets an office and warehouse, uh, use for this building. They're also showing proof of parking that would meet, uh, the warehouse portion changing to manufacturing, which, uh, requires a little bit more intensive, uh, a parking code, um, so they do meet both those setups on site. Uh, the overall style of the building, and again, layout of the building, uh, mimics the other two buildings that have been approved. Uh, the design of the building will also be similar to the other two buildings, just a little bit different color, accent colors being incorporated. Um, screening was a, a big piece during the concept plan with the adjacent residential. Uh, the south portion is kind of that critical area, uh, which I'll kind of get into in other slides here. Um, this is just a more simplified site plan, incorporating the, uh, proof of parking as well, if we need to refer back to that. Uh, this is their landscape plan, um, so a majority of their plantings are oriented on the southern side, uh, intentionally on top of the berm area, uh, to help screen from the adjacent residential. So the berm basically encompasses a majority of that southern portion of the site, uh, which is to help, uh, boost up the height uh, of the screening from the residential, uh, to the southwest of this property. They have, uh, provided a couple, uh, section drawings as well to give us an understanding of kind of the grade changes, uh, between this site, um, and with the incorporation of the berm and plantings. Um, so they've provided two section cuts with the two most adjacent, uh, residential properties to give you an understanding of how significant that berm is, uh, plus the plantings on top of it, and in terms of what line of sight can see, can be seen, uh, from those residential properties. Um, so they've kind of layered both the initial plantings and the darker shaded trees, and then as they mature and grow, um, into more mature heights, um, they've incorporated that after fifteen years of growth to give you an understanding of, uh, how the berming and the plantings will fill in to basically cover, uh, the building, um, at the top there. So the loading dock would sit, uh, recessed into the, into the site on that southern portion. Uh, the berming, um, along with the plantings would help screen that portion and the light, lighting back there as well, uh, for bo- for both, uh, section cuts there. Uh, they've also incorporated a, a couple renderings, um, to give you an idea of, uh, those view sheds, uh, from the most adjacent residential property. Uh, again, showing the initial installation of the landscaping with the berm in terms of what would be seen, and then as, uh, those trees start to age and fill in, um, they'll essentially cover, uh, a majority of that building in the back there. Uh, these are the proposed, uh, elevations and renderings of the building. So the building is, uh, pretty straightforward, um, until they have an end user identified, uh, they would really, uh, be able to tell kind of how the inside would format, uh, but the exterior, again, will be similar, if not, uh, the same as the other two buildings being constructed. So in conclusion, we're asking you to make, uh, two motions this evening. Um, one, to adopt resolution number twenty-two-two dash twenty-three, which is approving the preliminary site and building plan and preliminary plat for Chaska Creek Industrial Phase Three, and then based on the conditions that are listed within that resolution. Um, and then adopt ordinance number one thousand nine, approving the rezoning from open and rural residential to the, uh, planned industrial district, PID ten. Happy to answer any questions, otherwise we do have the applicants in the audience as well.
Questions for Liz?
I, uh, I, I like the rendering that you showed about the screening, because that was really the, the biggest concern that we had with the residential. And I, I know the applicant, when he told me that there was like, it was twelve foot lower in that corner or something like that than the other side. I know that that really helped the screen and, and the size of the berm they're putting in, and the size of the plantings certainly, I don't even know if the headlights would get over the berm, um, and the trees will certainly screen that, so I, I'm glad that that was, um,
addressed.
That was, uh, a very large concern by the, by the neighbors over there, so appreciate that.
Yeah, I, I agree with that. I thought that was a nice kind of lookout. I wish you could let those trees grow just like that picture, just that fast, right? But I do appreciate that. The other question that came up on the concept plan, not directly connected, but was, was a focused effort on figuring out what the rest of that, to the west. Obviously, nothing's coming up for, there's, 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 I just want to make sure we're, we're still thinking about that, because that was the concern, right? Is, you have those houses there, there's the field across the street, if that becomes industrial, now I'm meeting compass. So I just want to make sure we, we keep, we talk about that, because we.
We are, the, I mean, one of the challenges that is popular around that is not every homeowner sees it the same way. And so we're, what we're trying to do is, we're trying to come up with a plan that, uh, make sure that people just don't get left behind. And, but still sort of looks at, you know, there's, there are property owners over there that clearly bought their property for investment. And so I think we have a good thought process for how to address that, uh, to, to, to be able to move forward. But it's not as simple as everybody agreeing.
Never is.
Never is, but I, I think it's important to understand that.
Did we have that meeting with the residents there?
No, not yet, because we're, we want to make sure that we sort of understand the whole picture first, but we've been touching base with some to sort of understand what the, what the issues are.
Okay, I, I just know that we had said that we would meet with them, I just want to make sure that we.
Yeah, and I've, and I've been in direct conversation with, um, there was one resident who was kind of pushing, you know, pushing in and representing that group at the meeting. I've been in direct conversations with him.
Okay.
So we are working towards that.
Right, I, I just knew that, you know, that that was always in the plan, and I just.
We just want to make sure, we want to make sure we have a good alternative option to be able to talk about. We don't want people to just get upset, we want to actually have a solution.
Right.
I've just had one question in regards to just, like, noise, like, of hours of operation at this facility with, like, loading the trucks, you know, the use of the docking stations and stuff. Is there limitations as to like, when they can and cannot?
Well, there's.
Hours of the day?
No, I mean, our industrial parks don't put hours or restrictions. What they do fall under though is state noise guidelines, uh, that they have to, to follow. Um, and it usually hasn't been, because we have other residential areas that pop up against industrial areas, that it usually hasn't been an issue. It's usually more of an issue when you get into like a heavy manufacturing facility.
Yeah, yeah, and I mean, this doesn't appear to be so.
Yeah.
I just, I, and like, Councilmember Grau had mentioned, like, would be great if the trees were just rapidly growing like that, but, you know, and that will, that will cut it down, but I was just more curious in regards to that piece of things.
Anyone else have any questions?
It's just great to see that area really, you know, boom, 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 kind of.
Well, I think that will really start opening up a lot of other things, you know, and obviously the, um, one of the things we can see in is that extension of that sewer line all the way down to the VFW is, uh, next step of this, uh, will help and, and it opens up the property the west of two twelve, so. Absolutely.
It's good to see that, um, businesses value our location, you know, like, very core in terms of, you know, access to two twelve and the location to, you know, outstate Minnesota, so. You know, this is, uh, really, it's, it's, you know, I think we've been waiting a lot of years to see this type of growth start to happen, and it's good to actually see it start, um, see it taking hold.
I'm gonna ask, is there any residents here that would like to speak? Okay. All right, at that point, I, uh.
Jay had a big speech ready. He had a big, Jay had a big speech ready.
Well, you can speak. I know you're a man of many words. Um, I, I do have one question for, for you. Um, I received a call from the gentleman that farms that property. Is your plan to go this year? I, I, yeah, come on up.
Here, I'm gonna come up. And if you would like any of these graphs, I have printed them out for you, if you can't see them very closely for the screening, but, uh, good evening, Mayor Winchell and members of the council. Um, my name is Jay Moore with Opodin, and here to answer any questions you might have about the project.
Are, are you planning on moving dirt this year and going?
Yes.
Okay.
July one.
Cause he's been trying to, he wanted your number, but I said, well, I don't know if he even, tradition said the city bought it, well, we didn't buy it. So that's why it's, I figured I was, and then when it was on the agenda here, I just figured I'll talk to you tonight about it, but.
Yeah, you can pass his number along, but, uh, yeah, we plan on moving dirt in July.
Okay.
If we can get permitted.
When do you expect first tenants to be in?
Well, phase one is gonna complete in June of this year. Phase two will complete in November of this year, and then phase three will be about a year later than phase one, so. And then phase three will be about a year later than phase one, so in the summer of '23. So about every six months is when we plan on opening these buildings.
Apparently the interest must be strong.
It's pretty strong and I'm sure you've heard from your staff and I've just talked to several developers today that it's coming south and it's coming south big. There's a lot of people that are vying for property and I'm sure you'll hear and see plans here, so there's a lot of action.
It's, there's lots of discussions about stuff, so it's, without a doubt, it's the busiest I've ever seen it, ever. It's, it's very busy.
Open two buildings this size, six months apart, that's telling you there's definitely demand and a third one barely a year away, so. Tell you something, so it's, it's pretty awesome. Be awesome. I don't know, anyone else for Jay? Ground the hook? Okay, thank you. All right, so we need a couple motions here. Do we have to do the ordinance first? Do we have to rezone first? Does that matter?
Well, you should do them separate.
I know we got to do them separate.
I don't know, which one do you prefer, or don't you care?
I don't have a preference.
Okay, whatever you want to do. Just do them separate.
I can follow and, and we're gonna, we're looking at a motion to adopt resolution 2022-23, approving preliminary site plan for Chaska Creek Industrial.
So moved.
So a motion by Councilmember Wong.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hatfield.
Figure that one out.
I think it was tuned in there.
Simultaneous.
Uh, again, this is 2022-23, approving the Chaska Creek Industrial preliminary site and building plan, so discussion. Hearing not all favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Post same sign. Motion carries. Now we'll move to a motion to adopt ordinance 1009, approving rezoning of Chaska Creek Industrial Phase Three from Rural Residential R, R2 to open zoning districts plan, industrial district number 10, PID 10.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Hubbard, second by Councilmember Wong, discussion. Hearing not all favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate you being here. All right, we move to adopt resolution 2022-24, ordinance 1010, approving preliminary plat and rezoning of Ensconced Woods Johnson Ryland Builders.
Mayor, Councilmember, this is an item coming back from the Planning Commission recommending approval. This is a concept plan that we saw back in May of 2021, so about a year ago. And is the area that's just to, I guess it'd be the south and east of Founder's Ridge neighborhood. Liz has got the presentation again, so I'll turn it over to her.
Thank you, Matt. Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. We have a preliminary plat and rezoning request this evening for Ensconced Woods, being proposed by Johnson Ryland Builders and Remodelers. So we're in the second step in the process as well for this project, still another step to go. As Matt mentioned, this property, it's highlighted in blue on this aerial exhibit, but it encompasses two separate properties. One owned by the Carlson family. The 15 acres north of the ravine is basically being looked at for this project. And then the 10 acre property owned by the Roebling family, just immediately to the east of the Carlson property, is also a part of this project area. So the Founder's Ridge development is just to the west of this property. County Road 44, also known as Big Woods Boulevard, abuts the northern side of this property. We have additional wooded areas and ravine systems, kind of on the south portion, as well as additional residential on the other sides of this project area. So the background, so Founder's Ridge was approved back in 2013 and 2015. And during that time, multiple stub streets were provided on the west, south, and east sides of the development. Founder's Path stubs up on their eastern edge, which essentially provided the, the groundwork for the Carlson property and the Roebling property to connect into that street. So this will be a continuation of that. We did see the concept plan for Ensconced Woods back in May of 2021, so this is the second step in the process. So just want to highlight a couple of the changes that have occurred since that 2021 approval. There was a slight reduction in the lot count for the development, so they started at 30 lots. The plan this evening is at 29 lots. They also looked at the dimensions of the lot a little bit more and changed them from 80 feet wide to 75 feet wide. There are two residences, one on the Carlson property and one on the Roebling property. The Carlson residence will be removed along with the outbuildings on the site. The Roebling property and homestead will be incorporated into this development. So currently, their driveway accesses onto the county road, onto Big Woods Boulevard. And with a requirement from the county, they are expected to remove that driveway and incorporate it into the new development, so you'll see that reflected in these plans. Another piece that changed from concept was they had a private drive servicing four total lots. That has since been eliminated. There was an issue with having a private drive mixed with public utilities. So the recommendation from staff was to eliminate that private drive, which they have done as a part of this preliminary plan, which also allowed for additional tree preservation to occur as well. And with the elimination of that private drive and the elimination of one of their lots, they were able to pull their cul-de-sac back from the eastern edge, which allowed for additional tree preservation to occur as well. So the preliminary plat request is for a total of 29 lots. Twenty, 28 of those which are new, single-family lots, and then one lot would be for the existing Roebling residence. And then the second part of this request is for rezoning from, to a planned residential district, PRD 81 to be exact. So this is the existing layout of the two properties today. So in total, it's approximately 25 acres in size. There's a house and outbuildings on the Carlson site. Again, those will be removed as a part of this project. The Roebling residence, which is a little bit closer to the county road edge there, would remain and be incorporated into the development. There was one wetland identified on site and that will be preserved as a part of the development as well. And they have also done some tree inventory and surveys of the area and have delineated, delineated their wooded steep slope areas. So this is the proposed preliminary layout. As you can see, Founder's Path will extend just to the east a ways and then provide access to the main road that accesses or provides access to all of the 29 lots. The layout is really kind of jurispracted or dictated by this wetland in the middle of the site. So they have kind of brought their street around that with the lots accessing on either side. There is no access onto the county road and that was intentional with the county prohibiting any additional access onto the road, so all access will come from Founder's Path, just to the west there. So one of the bigger items with this property is the wooded characteristics of it. They did do kind of a pretty hefty analysis during their concept plan, which they engaged in Arborist to kind of identify all these different tree areas of both the Carlson and Roebling sites. With the Carlson site, they've kind of identified these three different groupings of trees. Altered non-native area, which is the brown portion, are kind of those younger trees that kind of came up over time after the property was used for pasture. So these are smaller trees. Roughly seven acres of the overall site is made up of that area. Staff did identify that this area was kind of a lesser priority in terms of preservation, just with the type and quality of trees that consists within that area. And most of these trees do plan to be removed with the proposed plan. And then roughly four acres of the property is composed of the big woods, so those are those older, more quality trees such as maples and oaks. And then a portion of that will be preserved, about 3.4 acres of the overall four acres of that tree group will be preserved with this plan. And then the other type was planted evergreens, so trees that have been planted by the property owner, roughly an acre of that encompasses the site. And the north portion of those trees will be preserved. And then with the Roebling property, a couple areas were identified. So the scattering of larger trees makes up about two and a half acres of the site, so oaks and maples, basswoods. And those are kind of more so around the Roebling residence in that brown area. So essentially what they kind of use as their yard space today. So I would say a majority of those will be removed with this plan. And then the other tree group was the southern mesic maple basewood tree group, which staff identified as kind of the most priority area in terms of the quality of trees that consist in that area, and that's highlighted in the green portion of the property. So that's roughly seven acres of the total 10 acre parcel. And those again are oak trees, maple trees, and are more quality in nature. And again, with the plan that they're proposing, about five and a half acres of those will be preserved. And 2.8 of those which fall outside of our already preserved wooded steep slopes will be preserved within that. So mainly the areas around the edges of the development are kind of those areas for preservation. They have prioritized that southern mesic area of the plan. In total, or from a value standpoint, about 61% of the trees surveyed on the site will be preserved. And then just want to give you kind of the layout in relation to kind of those tree areas. So the blue areas are everything that are preserved with the plan. The lighter blue is kind of that wooded steep slope, and then the darker blue goes above and beyond what's required by code. The builder, who is also the developer of this property, will be the primary builder for the development. There may be an opportunity where they'll sell to other builders, but the idea is to have them be the main builder. So they are mainly a custom home build and some of their products are shown on these images on this slide. So in conclusion, we're asking you to make two separate motions this evening. One is to adopt resolution number 2022-24, which is approving the preliminary plat for Ensconced Woods. And then based on the conditions that are listed within that. The second motion would be adopt ordinance number 1010, which is approving the rezoning from the open and low-density residence R1 zoning districts to planned residential district number 81. Happy to answer any questions, otherwise the applicant is in the audience as well.
Questions for Liz? Did they have to have, or did they remeet with the residents? Because they met with them in the concept, right?
They did, and I'm not sure if they had an additional follow-up at all. They can probably speak to that.
I just didn't know if there was any more comments now that we're in preliminary, so. I mean, I, to me, it looks like they've looked at this and done a good job preserving trees. And obviously the, the wetland they have to preserve, but I don't know, it was like a good thing. I just know that in our description, it talks about the Roebling property wouldn't change, the driveway would stay there, but everywhere else it's, so I don't, I don't know if that's a big deal. But I was gonna call today and tell you that, but I forgot about it. I just know that that, in the, in the description, it says that the driveway would stay on County Road 44. But I know everywhere else it says that it's removed and obviously the plans show it, so.
I guess, yeah, I guess that leads me to my one question as I'm reading the Carver County memo. They're considering existing, or they're considering access for construction temporarily. Is that for sure? I mean, when does that fall? Because that would be important to know.
I think they almost have to, because otherwise it, you would have to go through the.
Right.
The neighborhood there, so, you know, typically that would just be worked out with some kind of a permit with the county as far as when that would start.
Okay, because yeah, it just seems, and then it just seems a little bit concerning in the sense it says, you know, allowable only until the occupancy of the first dwelling. I don't know what the timed build out is of this neighborhood, but that's just one thing I just kind of want to bring up. Because I think just concern for the neighbors there, you know, I don't know what the timeline is to build, but.
I will say that's, from what I've heard, again, for full disclosure, I live in Founder's Ridge, so I'm connected to the property and the next property that's coming up. That is one of the biggest concerns is that the entrance, when that construction entrance closes, the traffic, because it's like a lot of neighborhoods that are not unique in that aspect. We have young, young families, young kids, bikes, hills, skateboards. Cars that don't already stop at stop signs when they should, when they come in and they're making deliveries and UPS trucks and FedEx and all that type of stuff. So that is a, a big concern during construction. You know, I do think the other concern and unfortunately with the county road there and the way the road turns, we talked about this in concept plan. There really is another, not another elk ever, which is hard. I, I get it, right? I think that the neighborhood gets it, but it's hard because you're going to take all, all those houses are going to come out the neighborhood and on the Founder's Path and, and then out. You know, so that is unfortunately is what it is at this point because of the county. I think they understand that, so I think the compromise or the hope is really to control that construction traffic and learn to accept the residential traffic that comes with it.
Yeah.
And I think, I mean, if, if you really think about a lot of the, the construction traffic, I think that a lot of people worried about is during the dirt moving and hauling in and getting roads up to grade. That will all be in place because they really can't build any houses till that. So basically after that, then it's just the builders and the lumberers and cement trucks like that. So it cuts down on major, bigger operations than, and, and, you know. I don't know, you know, we've been through these infill neighbors, neighborhoods before and they're always a challenge, but and I'm going to ask this, I just don't think we've had a lot of problems with construction traffic coming through there. I think that they've been pretty respectful of the neighbors as they come through there. I don't know who warns the construction people, but I haven't really heard, have we had many complaints? As far as, you know, the carpenters and the concrete guys?
I mean, I don't know, I've lived through it twice.
I was just going to say.
I guess my, my view of it is that people just sort of get used to it.
Yeah. I mean, and I think.
I mean, most of the, I will say that most of the traffic that occurs during those construction type processes occurs when people are at work or people are at school. And so unless you're working from home, you don't really notice it. But there are certain days like when the, when the sods put in. There's a lot of, there's a lot of vehicles there. I mean, I think it's worth a question for us to ask of the county about whether or not the construction access can be kept open for the actual construction.
Yeah, because they, they clearly say the first.
Yeah, I, I just.
Which will happen, I mean, that could happen.
Yeah, I just think it would mitigate it well, because not to tie agenda items together, but there's going to just be so much development in that particular neighborhood. I just think that would help ease some of the folks that are there.
Yeah, it's gonna be a little bit different with the next one because there's other access.
Right, I'm just saying, like, they're getting it from both sides, though, so...
But this one in particular, I think it's worth us having the discussion with the county about keeping that construction access open.
And if that can happen, all the better. I mean, but this is, and again, this neighborhood has the ability to go out to it. And we have other areas of the same size and probably larger that have had to go through the neighborhood. So it's not uncommon for this to happen. And like I said, I just think that most times that the people that you're having the issues with about speeding and stop signs generally are the people that live there.
Person deliveries.
People that are driving there to work, they get it. I mean, because we just, I don't think we have a lot of that. So, I mean, I know that it's definitely a concern. And I think if we can convince county to keep it open as long as possible, all the better.
I don't know, I think the fact that there is no other access here, I think, probably gives us some argument to make with that, so we'll make the request for that.
Great, thank you.
The other comment that I think I read in the notes, I just want to confirm. There's no planned association with this at this point? I don't know if that's a question for the builder or the developer.
Right, they don't plan to have an HOA.
And again, it's just one person's opinion, which is fine. I do think, again, and I could help connect association reps too, but I do think it makes some sense potentially if they've explored the surrounding associations. Because you think about, again, all that traffic goes into the other association, right? So, you know, and there'll be sidewalks, I mean, you know...
Do you pay for your, I mean, your roads aren't obviously for your...
Correct, there's some association, like it pays for, like the building, the monument on the corner. I can't think of the word. There's some irrigation pieces to it. It's not high, I guess, I don't know what word, how to describe it, but...
But is it being impeded by additional?
Well, you would assume that. I mean, just all like the look, you know, like I don't know if they're gonna put a monument. I don't see a monument listed on here, so it doesn't look like there'll be a monument. But, you know, you just look natural flow of neighborhood. You know, a person driving in the area isn't necessarily gonna not realize that, you know, this boulevard trees, this maintain is a different neighborhood. It's all gonna look the same, so there's probably some mutual benefit. But again, just one person's opinion, maybe there's no interest by either side of it either, so.
But that's not our deal, right?
Correct, yep, so understood, just putting that out there. But, and then the last comment I'll just say, and I'd like to see, like, I did see it on there with the trees. I do think one is protecting as many trees that shoulder Big Woods Boulevard the better. Because I think that is one unique space. When you drive up that hill and that Ryan Road, it adds to that feel when you have that lots and those trees. And it looks like a lot of that is being kept on the edge there. If you take too much off, the argument could be made that it's no longer ensconced woods anymore because it'd be open, right? But, so I get the terminology, but that is a unique feature that has kind of a nice feel. And we've talked about how that road is a gateway into downtown and kind of keeping that feel and look, I think, is important. So I was glad to see kind of the, I think your words, Liz, was the above and beyond tree connections on the sides, on Big Woods Boulevard there.
Anyone else? I'm gonna ask, is there anybody here? You're, as a resident? Did you have anything you'd like to say? Yep, come on out. I'll leave your name and address, please.
Name's Gary Ross. I live at 363 Founder's Path, right on the corner. And to the city planner's comment, we've actually chased down construction workers to tell them to stop the stop sign. We've actually chased down school buses to tell them to stop that stop sign because of the number of kids. So Founder's Path, the Unitedia, it's a nice straight shot, it's a nice straight street. Got nice slopes, the kids love to get on their bikes or their scooters and be on it right down the hill. My concern is that what's gonna happen if somebody blows that stop sign at the wrong time, especially in summer. Now, I talked to the construction folks after the city planning meeting two weeks ago and talked about, you know, the path access for the construction equipment coming in. Very pleased with their plans and how they're doing it. But, yeah, as far as, you know, bringing in the lumber to build it, you know, stuff like that, I, to be honest, I don't care that it comes through the neighborhood. It's just the heavy earth equipment, it's all we're concerned about. At least for our family, at that residence, so, but that's pretty much it, just...
And that, that will all be done through that, the Carlson property.
Absolutely, which is fantastic. So the rest of it comes to you, we don't care.
To me, that's a bonus.
Yep.
Be able to keep that out of there, and we can keep that.
Absolutely.
We can convince county to keep that open the longer, even the better, you know?
Absolutely, if it could, great. But from the talking room two weeks ago, we were pleased to hear that the bulk of the heavy earth equipment were gonna come through that Carlson property. And so we were like, get on, get it. So we're happy with that.
All right, awesome, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Gary.
Steve, are you guys staying in your house?
Uh, I am.
Okay, I thought you said you were gonna move. So they're the old, that's the Roeblings, by the way, anybody doesn't know. What's gonna happen to that house then, is it gonna be remodeled?
Yeah, they're gonna remodel it, update it, resell it.
Okay. That was a personal question, I guess, I just wasn't sure. I thought Steve told me he was moving, so. All right, anyone else have a comment or question on this? Developer, you got anything? Okay. All right, I'm open to a motion.
So I'll make a motion...
Oh, we're gonna start with 2024 approving Ensconced Woods preliminary plat. We gotta do two motions.
Two motions, okay. So I'll make a motion to adopt resolution 2022-24 approving Ensconced Woods preliminary plat.
Second.
All right, I have a motion by Councilmember Wong, second by Councilmember Gra. Again, and that's resolution 2022-24. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries. All right, now we need a motion to adopt ordinance 1010 approving rezoning for Ensconced Woods for low-density residential R1 and open to Plan Residential District Number 81, PRD 81.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Hubbard.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hatfield. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries. All right, thanks, everyone. And we are gonna move on to adopt resolution 2022-25 ordinance 1011 approving preliminary plat and rezoning for Rivertown Heights.
Mayor, Councilmember, this is another item coming from the Planning Commission recommending approval. This is flipping over to the other side of Founder's Ridge neighborhood, on the south and the west side, looking at getting into Holosik property and looking at a 90-lot development, which would include 89 new lots and then one existing home, similar to our last development. So I'll turn this one over to Liz, and she can go through the presentation.
Thank you, Matt. Thank you, council and mayor. We have another preliminary plat and rezoning request for Rivertown Heights being proposed by D.R. Horton. This one is also in the second step of the process, still an additional step to go. The site is highlighted in red above on this aerial exhibit. So the shape is pretty unique at best in terms of its layout. So it will take over the other edges of the Founder's Ridge neighborhood. So on the east, or it will abut Founder's Ridge on the western side as well as the southern side. And really, this shape is dictated by where the community park is going. So hence why we have kind of weird formations happening here. This site is also directly on the edge of Big Woods Boulevard. It will be directly east of the future Collector Road, which would extend down to the south. I'll show a better exhibit of that later on. So Founder's Ridge is basically on the north and east sides of this property with open land kind of around its abutting areas. So in terms of a background, again, like I mentioned before, Founder's Ridge was approved in 2013 and 2015. And again, during that time, the stub streets were provided at Founder's Path on the west side and then Carver Path on the south side of the Founder's Ridge development. So those were anticipated to provide extensions to those streets for future development. And then it was back in 2017 that the purchase agreement was executed for the future Collector Road right-of-way for Savannah Way, which would happen south of County Road 44, Big Woods Boulevard. That approximately takes up six acres of the Holosik property. And then the purchase agreement also included the park space for the future community park, averaging out at approximately 52 acres in size. And then the future elementary school owned by the school district, approximately six-acre site there. And then it was back in November of last year that we saw the concept plan come through, and now we're in the second step in the process. This exhibit shows the layout of those areas for the community park as well as the future elementary school, shown in dark purple. The 52-acre community park shown in dark green. And then the future Collector Road right-of-way was also secured for the southern extension of Savannah Way, south of County Road 44. So a couple changes that have occurred since their concept plan. They too have reduced the amount of lots from 91 lots to 90 lots. Just a few layout changes. They did eliminate one of their cul-de-sacs that they had on the northeast portion of the site, which created a different layout for how the Holosik homestead would fit into the development. I should have mentioned that before. The homestead property will be shown as a part of this overall development.
Can you show me where that elimination of a cul-de-sac is? Because I couldn't figure that out.
Yeah, and I apologize, I didn't bring, or I didn't provide a slide for the previous concept plan. But basically, it encompassed this area of the site of basically a cul-de-sac going all the way to the edge of that northeastern side, which would include the existing Holosik residence as well. So that basically just turns into a through street. And then the residents, the existing residents would have a driveway off that through street on Pershuron.
So that will have access to the county road then?
Uh, no, sorry. The existing Holosik residence driveway will be reoriented into the development or off of Pershuron Boulevard. So the county also required that that driveway access be incorporated into the development and not onto the county road.
So we're creating a road that does not have a cul-de-sac and dead ends? Why would we do that?
I probably should just go to the layout, because it does continue through.
I'm looking at the layout, and if it's the one you're telling me, that one right there.
Right here?
No. The, I'm, does that road go out to the county road?
Yes.
Right there?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, it connects with the existing Harvest entrance.
Okay, that's what I thought you said, wasn't. And I was gonna go that, is not a good thing.
Yeah.
Where would this cul-de-sac have been?
It was right here.
Oh.
So they've just kind of reoriented those lots onto Pershuron, yep.
That just didn't make sense what you were saying there.
Sorry about that. So what they're asking for this evening is for preliminary plat approval for a 90-lot subdivision. 89 of those would be new, single-family lots. And then one of those would be for the existing Holosik residence. The other portion of the request would be a rezoning from the open and open zoning district to a planned residential district, PRD 82. So this is the existing layout of the site today, so it's approximately 40 acres in size. There are a couple outbuildings near the homestead that exist today, and those will be removed. The residents will stay, though. Again, the driveway is being shown or exists onto the county road today. But again, that would be reoriented off of Pershuron Boulevard's extension. And then this is the preliminary layout, also showing kind of the layout of the community park, just to give you an understanding of kind of how all of this fits in. So 90 total lots, they will be 65 feet wide average, which is similar to their other products within the city. The Holosik residence will be incorporated into the development, so have access off of Pershuron Boulevard there. Founder's Path would extend to the western edge of this development, which would connect into Savannah Way ultimately. And then Carver Path, which is the other stub-stub street within Founder's Ridge, would also be extended just a short distance to connect into that Pershuron Boulevard extension all the way to the southern limits of the property. One of the items that we brought up during concept was the adjacency of the county road and the future Collector Road, being able to provide screening and birmingham along those edges consistent with what was done north of County Road 44 for the lots adjacent to the Collector Road. So they are continuing that landscaping and birmingham all the way through on those edges. The other lots on Pershuron will be set back about a lot, a lot with, from the county road. Plus landscaping will also be incorporated to provide some screening from that edge. The other piece with this layout, so D.R. Horton will be developing up to that southeasterly edge of their property. The other side of that is owned by the Carlson property. So the southern portion of property, south of the ravine that was looked at with the ensconced woods. So that would basically come off of those two stub streets on that southeasterly portion. D.R. Horton will basically provide temporary cul-de-sacs at each of these stubs until the Carlson portion is ready to develop. But they have been in coordination with the family in terms of the layout of the streets and then how lots could potentially access off of that road.
Carlson has no interest in doing that little piece, it sure would be nice to fill it in.
I know the developer has approached them on that, but I think they've, they're exploring their options right now.
We are coordinating with them to make sure that it's understood how that steep slope boundary works and that the road can, the curvature of that road connection will ultimately make sense when they do proceed, so.
It would sure eliminate a lot of concerns in filling that down the road.
That's the goal.
Don't disagree, yep.
That's what I'm saying, I'm hoping that we're getting involved there a little bit and just seeing, I mean, it just seems crazy that they're doing the rest and not looking at this little piece and just filling it in. I get it.
Yeah, all we can do is encourage the...
Right, no, I know, I know, I know.
Yeah.
Although I'd say I would encourage, like, signage to be put at the ends there because, you know, not just a little tiny sign, but something big and bold at the end of each of those stubs, because people always seem to forget that something's coming.
Yeah.
Might really freak them out that there are future lots for ghosts.
Yeah, that's one thing that we'll work with the developer on as we move into final is figuring out a sign plan for both the community park and these stub streets, ensuring that those pieces of information are gonna be efficiently provided.
So Savannah, Savannah Way will not be extended as another entrance into this at this point as far as for construction?
Correct.
That won't be done until the whole thing gets started, schools?
Right, until the elementary school and community park warrant the need for it. But for this development, we wouldn't be putting in that stub street at this time. But they'll still have access onto Pershuron or from Pershuron Boulevard, which would be their main point of access for construction, or the only point of access for construction. They'll have...
I mean, I think that's, this is... I mean, I think that's, this is a little better setup. It'll keep the construction in the construction area.
Right.
So that, that will work out.
Yeah. They'll put up signage as well to inform.
I saw that on one of the maps.
Yep. I think it shows on this exhibit, actually. So they will be breaking up the development into two phases. The red portion is the first phase of the development, and then the blue portion is the second phase. So they'll, they'll come in at separate times for plating on each of those at this time.
So, so they're not, they're not being done all at once?
Not at this time, no.
So which ones are the model, are gonna be, I assume we're gonna have model homes for this? Which ones will be the models?
Do you want to open? Yeah.
Good evening. I'm Deb Ridgeway with D.R. Horton. So the site will be graded in its entirety this year, is our goal. And the first phase of development, the streets and utilities, would be completed this year with the Phase Two. Obviously, market dependent, it would be next year. So our model homes, we anticipate would be on, I think that says Block Four? Let's see, Block, it'll be right by the, the homestead. It would be those first few lots right off of Pershuron.
So you'll, because usually you'll have like, you know, like, what, like, maybe three or four models or whatever, plus like one of them just as a pad for parking or something. That's what I'm guessing.
Yep, so with this type of setup, because we're only, we only have one line of homes per se, we'll have likely one model home with one parking lot.
Okay.
To keep, yeah, customers off.
So that means that in terms of actual number of homes that would get built there. So right now, there's, there's four, five, six, like, or like, six on either side of that, the Holy Sick, or the, or sorry, you have the house there, right?
Yes.
So there's six, that means that there's actually four that would probably actually get occupied versus the model home and the parking, and the parking area, which could continue until everything's sold, basically.
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct.
Okay.
Yep, so we anticipate about half, so that, that phasing is about half the site this year, and then the second half, the rest of the, about forty-five lots would be next year.
So you'll grade, but it won't have sewer and water in that, in that second phase?
We'll have it graded, but no sewer and water, correct.
Here we go. We'll, we'll hear that about construction traffic.
Yeah, keep in mind, though, that there's that, yeah.
No, they're not, not, not for the blue area.
Yeah.
That's why I wish the blue area was first.
Yep.
Because we'll, we'll go through that same thing.
Like Del Webb's doing it from the back one forward.
But, I don't know, what do you do? As long as you inform those residents, there's gonna be construction coming. That I put on you guys. That, I mean, it's gotta be clear about that that road's going through, and there's gonna be lots of.
Activities.
Construction trucks going through there.
At what point would you start construction, you know, on the, on Phase Two? Are they like seventy percent sold, or?
Well, we like to, depending on how sales go toward the end of this year, because realistically, we won't be able to start putting a model in until fall. So we would be open for sales theoretically, maybe by the end of the year, January-ish. But we wanna get going right away, because we build on spec right now, and so we're, we're building them one after the other. And so we wanna be ready for next year. So we would bring that on probably about this time next year, as we come with the final plat. Construction, we like to start construction as soon as road restrictions come off, so that we can start bringing in the, the heavy pipe and all that. So it would be spring, late spring.
Okay, so you're gonna parade in next year, next spring?
Yeah.
Right.
Since you're up there, I have some comments and questions. First a question, and then it'll come back to a comment. So sixty-five foot lots, what are the lots across the street, like the Harvest? Does, you know, are they about sixty-five?
Yep, they are. Sixty-five, seventy, yep.
And so the reason I bring that up is that the one area that concerns me the most is the one that directly would be Phase Two on this, directly above the back of the houses in Founder's Ridge. And I understand the logic of not lining them up perfect, I can buy that, you're not looking into them. But those lot lists are much narrower than the ones right next to it. So if there was any place in this neighborhood that you could differentiate lot size, that would be a nice spot, because you're gonna have a very obvious contrast of lot size between the existing Founder Ridge and the ones that are kind of in that first row on Phase Two. And I will just say that I think those are, having some variations in lot sizes is attractive. I will personally say that one of the reasons why I was most attracted to where I ended up living in the Founder's Ridge area was the larger lot sizes. You didn't feel like you were on top of people. I understand the rest of the development and maximizing houses, I get that it's economics. But when you get that close to the neighborhood, that, just having some of that consistency. So I just, I get it, you know, you're, you're a bit, you're a, you have a business model, I understand that. But that's the one area where there's that really direct contrast of some lot size differences, that I think in other times we've pointed out in the past for other developments too, where try to blend it, so it's not like, oh, I clearly left this neighborhood and now I'm in a new neighborhood type of thing. So that's one comment. The other comment, if I just look at, and it's, it's a rendering, right? So I'm just gonna, I'm not sure exactly what I'm looking at. But Pershuron, so the entrance in, is there a plan right now that there would be a median in there similar to what's across the street on the other side?
No, right now there is not. We've had discussions with the city, and in order to have the medium, there'd have, or median, there'd have to be a homeowners association. And this would be the only reason, quite honestly, to have an association, which we don't feel very confident that the association would survive long-term, if just for the median.
Wait a second. It's like, so my neighborhood has a median, at least coming right at the entrance with a monument sign, but we don't have an HOA.
Oh, the city must ranks.
That's, well, it's one of those things we, we just don't. I mean, it's a concrete monument.
It's one of the things that neighborhoods are starting to get away from, though, is having that, because there are developments where there is no association for that, and what do you do when it falls apart? So it's, I, I would agree that if you're going to have that, you need to have somebody take care of it.
That makes sense. I, I only point that out just because, again, it's that look and feel, one road across the road versus the other. And in, you know, to be honest for marketing, it's, that is a nice impressive entrance into that area with that, with that median there, and nice boulevard trees, and it's an opportunity. Again, I don't know where the, I, to your point, if that's the only thing the association's maintaining. It may be very cheap monthly, but not much interest. So I only bring that up because, again, it's that kind of consistent look and feel between it. So those are kind of, like I said, those are the two concerns that I have, is just a little bit of the, the lot sizes that directly about the existing neighborhood being more consistent with each other. And then maybe that entrance, making that kind of a, and maybe it's not a median, maybe it's something else, I don't know, I'm not an architect or a designer, but it's kind of a nice, again, I'm trying to, that look and feel of a downtown access and entryway, kind of what it looks and feels.
I would, I would tend to agree. I mean, the question is, is that, well, I mean, maybe without being prescriptive, you know, to have something that's a grander entrance that mirrors what's across the street in some way, shape, or form, that doesn't require maintenance in some way. I mean, that's something that, you know, you know, I think you had to be very supportive of, like, if you could figure out some way to do it that wouldn't require maintenance, or that would add to the grandeur of that entrance way, you know, sure, I was like, go for it. Because I think that there's, there's something about mirroring that, otherwise it kind of feels like, oh, this is that other neighborhood across the street, rather than the really nice neighborhood, right? Because especially because you're gonna have the model home, like, right there, it's like, well, you're looking at a really nice neighborhood across the road, right? I mean, that's what people are gonna see.
People are like, there's a monument, that's a nice neighborhood?
I think there's, there's something, when people, a lot of people I know when they buy homes.
What a nice median.
Well, I mean, it's the nice neighborhood. It's, it's, but it's, it's sort of the entrance, it's people's, it's the first impression, right? It's the first impression people see when they come in there.
I'm just not a fan of, I mean, you guys know, I'm not a fan of association.
I rode the plow, your plow route, and he, and he.
That's who took my mailbox off.
Well, no, like, he, he has to like back up and do some extra work in that little, because of that whole entrance and exit thing over in that area, so, I mean, I don't know. I, I, but I'm not.
There are definite maintenance issues.
Yeah.
So again, so I, so sorry, so it makes sense. So that, again, with no association, there would be no monument piece on there as well.
Correct.
Which is fine. Like I said, I obviously, again, right across, again, right or wrong, right across the street, there's a very large monument sign that would.
And that could change from our marketing folks internally, they may change their minds by the time we come back with.
Yeah, I'm not trying to tell them.
Maybe a totally different story.
I'm not trying to tell my marketing folks how to do their job, because they're much more talented than I am. I certainly understand that. But those are just the two things that I, kind of jumped out to me, you know, other than, I think the other thing that I will just state as well is that you talk about traffic and construction traffic a piece. The other reality is that the western half of Founder's Ridge will use that exit to go to two twelve. I mean, I certainly plan on using that exit to go to two twelve. I'll just say it, because otherwise I'm going back and hopping around and buying his house. So you'll, you know, I'll stop going by your house. I'm not the one running the red light by, by the stoplight. But I think that's a reality. Now, it's easier when the house, they could see that, right, as they're buying, making a buying decision.
Absolutely.
It'll be very nice, and it'll help everyone, when that feeder road gets built, because then you'll just go straight instead of kind of up and over.
One of the questions I had, and this might be more of a Matt question, is, so this is, and I saw it come up kind of in the planning commission when I watched it, but that's kind of a long straight shot of a road, and with the park kind of planned across the street. You know, we have down at the bottom of the hill here, and also in a, in a different spot in Chaska, that speed monitoring device. Is that ever something that can be placed inside of a residential neighborhood, you know, to really kind of help calm traffic on that long stretch?
Yeah, I mean, we've seen, are you talking about stuff on the, on the west side, or east side, or on the north side?
Maybe on the city park side, you know, maybe both, you know, just.
Because I will say that part of what's gonna dictate how that park is gonna be used is where the accesses are gonna be.
Yeah.
You know, because the, I, we're not gonna be promoting people to necessarily park on city streets as, as we're doing that. And so I think you're gonna see that most of the, most of the traffic entrance is gonna be pulled off of Savannah Way on the west side of the road, and parking facilities are gonna be put in a place where people are more walking out to those areas and not necessarily along those parks. It's a little bit different in a smaller neighborhood park, because you're gonna just encompass the whole thing, but this is fifty-some acres. I think you're gonna see most of the activities sort of sprawl out from more of a central parking area going out.
Sure. I just smell trouble with that long road with a park right across the street, and I'm just trying to figure out ahead of time, is there ways that we can help?
Well, and the good thing is, if that becomes an issue, that is something that can be added, I mean, they're.
Okay.
They're not cheap.
No, they're not. That's why, that's why I want to talk about now.
I looked at one, I was, I was curious how expensive they were for, because I was like, let's just get one for us down together. They're expensive.
They're expensive, I don't know.
But there's like other, right, I think that's a good point, though, and I think there's probably other traffic mediation ideas, too, with like, I don't know, but that's a really good thought with the park there.
But I think it's a good call out, though, because, I mean, that's a stretch that, you know, especially if you're on the park side of it, you're not worrying about like traffic coming from driveways going in there. I can see someone coming in like pretty fast, just because if they're like way down with that southern side, at least for a while, there's like nothing there stopping them. You've got an empty field or a park on one side that's not built yet, and then you've got houses on the other side. There's no reason why someone's just blow by there really fast if they're in a hurry.
Right.
There's nothing stopping them. There's real big curves. In fact, it'd be kind of fun to drive that curve. I mean, you know, speaking of someone who enjoys driving fast, so. And you didn't hear that from me, by the way.
Someday I'll have two teenager boys that'll be right in that area, so.
So, yeah, I would say, if, you know, it's always cheaper to put it in when you're first building it than it is to come back and add it later.
Right, I just didn't want to go without mentioning that, because it, it can be a problem in certain areas, like Clover Ridge and stuff, when you have long stretches, and it's just like, I just see this being something that these folks that end up moving in here start saying, oh, people are driving too fast.
Well, especially if they're trying to back out of their driveway and someone's just blowing by, you know? If you're, if you're pulling out of driveway and let's say the, the, the speed limit by default would be thirty miles an hour, right? Normally, in most neighborhoods, there's enough, enough change in direction of the streets, and they're narrow enough that people don't drive that fast. But here, there's a park across the street, there's really nothing else, so people will psychologically treat it as a boulevard even though it's not. I think that's the core problem. Because there's just house, 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 just going down the road. So I think that's something that we'd want to look at, because I think it's, the problem isn't, is not a, is not a technical problem from the perspective of the design of the street, that's a psychology problem because of the nature of the fact it's a long street with no intersections.
But one of those traffic devices can be put in at any point. It's not gonna change how we design or what we do now. We're gonna have to.
I also think, one of the things you're gonna see a difference on is that Savannah is gonna be, Savannah's gonna be designed as a collector. And so the width of that is gonna be very similar to Clover Ridge Drive going to the north. It's gonna be.
It'll be, it'll be similar to what you see just north of the roundabout.
Yeah, north of the roundabout. It's gonna be a big road. The, the stuff that you're seeing over on the east side of the park is not designed to be a collector. And so just the fact that it's skinnier is gonna keep, is gonna keep speeds down. Maybe you still see people on longer stretches, but it's not, it's not as acute of an issue as you see along collector roads. But collector roads, we don't have driveways on, so.
I, I think the differentiating factor is the lack of intersections. I mean, not saying you should add intersections, but, I mean, it's just because of the, you have this long stretch, but once you get past those first two blocks, there's a pretty long stretch where you're really gonna only have an intersection only from one side. And so that's gonna say, well, if anyone, someone's making a right turn and making a left, just blow right past, because there's no stops or anything, that's.
That's what happens in my neighborhood. People go in on the turn around the ball field, wind down, wind through, and they drive fast, faster than the fifteen that we have, and they drive over thirty. So it's just, you know, when you have a long stretch, people are just kind of going out on pilot because they're going home.
So maybe the more important question to ask is there gonna be parking on this road for the park? Because if you took the parking, if there wouldn't be any parking there, there's no reason to go in there.
See, that, that's where I think that the design of the park is gonna have a much bigger impact on this than anything else.
Absolutely.
Because if we design the park in a way that's not encouraging people to go over there, then the only people you're gonna see utilizing this road are the people who actually live in there. And then you start getting into a much different situation. You get into like, Schoolmaster is a good example in my neighborhood, where you have one long stretch and, and people complain about speed, well, it's their neighbors who are speeding. You know, it's different than the community using as a cut through. That's where I think that that, you know, that's where I was, you know, pointing out where the design of where we actually have people enter that park, because it's a community park, so a community park by definition is gonna have to have parking to be able to bring people from the rest of the community. How we design that is definitely gonna impact how people use that street.
Yeah, and I, I totally agree with you and see that. I guess you're right, the biggest perpetrators are your neighbors, but this is the thing that gets hard. You know, sitting up here and being in this position to approve these things, you have to look at this piece of it. And what I don't want to do is have neighbors showing Nest cameras to other neighbors saying, your kid is driving too fast in my neighborhood. If I can say something now and try to prevent something like that by having like a sign or something like that in place, that kind of helps be, make it cognizant for them to drive slower, I just want to put it out there and have it be something discussed.
I guess, you know, I know that there's different traffic calming mechanisms beyond signage that could be explored, so, I mean, I, my request is, I had this phase, since it's, you know, still in the middle of this, can we look at some other options as traffic calming, to see what other options may be available, like, if there's something that's a part of a build that could be done now, then it would be a good time to do it, rather than waiting till, oh, shoot, now we got the street built out, and then suddenly really expensive and cost prohibitive to do.
Right.
So that would be my request, at least, start looking at that at this point, because, I mean, I think the reality is, is that, you know, I, it's like, whenever there's like, in my own neighborhood, there's eighty homes, but without a doubt, whenever there's teenagers, like people, when kids hit puberty, get their driver's license, and then they turn sixteen, suddenly the traffic starts blaring out there, just because the kids, you know, the kids will always drive way too fast. That's just, for most, a good chunk of kids will do that. And that's what everybody complains about in my neighborhood, because it's, like, most of the adults understand, yeah, there's kids, there's young kids, and there's a mix of kids. Because it's like, mostly adults understand, yep, there's kids, there's young kids, and there's a mix of kids, and, but then teenagers, and there's people who don't know where they're going or whatnot. Will just blow through, and that's in my neighborhood, that's a loop, and then I know that in some of these other areas where there's like a big street, straightaway. It's a drag strip for a lot of people, especially teenagers, because, hey, I can drive fast, no one's gonna stop me, I'm not gonna run into any cars on the other side of the road, because no one's gonna be pulling out. So, why wouldn't they, right? I mean, I'm not saying it's logical for us, but we have to put ourselves in the minds of people who wouldn't necessarily think that way. And that's the, that's the challenge, so, so my ask is just, can we at least look at some options to see what that would mean to make sure we. Try to address the problem before it's a problem.
Yeah, I agree.
Uh, one more comment, fairness and feedback, I will appreciate and say thank you for kind of adding the trees. Uh on that lot, that section I was talking about with the lot sizes, um I know that's appreciative, I mean, it is, is tricky when you have. Houses kind of back to back, and it's a little bit of a nature of the fact of how there's nothing across the road, so. Fairness and feedback, since I was critical of those lots, I'll, we'll throw out there and appreciate the added uh trees and landscapes in between there.
Other comments?
Yeah, other than that, I think, you know, this is a really nice development, you know, it's well needed to, you know, start flushing this out. It'll also kind of create a nice sort of a border around the, the future park as it's, at least on one side. Like, one border, one edge of the park, so it's nice to start seeing this all fit together again.
Yeah, the neighborhood's ready for the park, I mean, that's the other feedback. You know, that neighborhood hasn't got a community, it doesn't have a neighborhood park, because it's meant to have the community park. You know, I think, you know, we're looking at, I mean, to speak for myself, I'm looking at my kids getting older, and so it's like, okay, you know, when, when's this coming? When's this park coming, so, you know, I, I, I think, you know, we understand that this stuff has to happen before that can happen. Um, I also think, you know, um the lack of not a school being built there impacted that park development. So some factors, you know, factors there that matter, but that's the other feedback, is the neighborhoods are ready to, to have. You know, those re, uh, a, a park that's in walkiness, that's how we know that people will come from all over in the community, because it's a community park. Uh, but I think there's some excitement building, and also with excitement becomes, when's it coming, when's it coming?
Quick question, as we're kind of looking at this, so the, there would be a sidewalk on, of that long stretch, there'd be a sidewalk on the east side. And would there be a walking trail or a sidewalk on the west side where the park is?
Would more than likely be a sidewalk, not a trail.
There's a sidewalk planned on both sides. And then, but then the sidewalk against the park. Going down a trail. There is a trail planned along the collector road. Oh, this is on the other side. And of course, there'll be trail network planned within the park itself. Now, this one, at least maybe I'm looking, I'm looking at the, the colored elevi, the colored illustration, but it doesn't illustrate crosswalks, maybe it's on the other one. I'm just trying to remember if it did or not, so, but that's okay, I mean, I think that, you know, you know, it's, I'm just asking, just wondering about that. I'm assuming that there's gonna be crosswalks at where the intersections are.
Yeah, and I think once we kind of nail down a design for the park, we'll understand where those crosswalk, crosswalks really need to be. But at this time, they're not really defined, right now.
Okay, anyone else, questions, comments? Anybody here from the neighborhood that's got a comment?
Not many times you get to come to one meeting and talk about two neighborhoods.
I really do, again, Gary Ross, three eight six three Founder's Path, none of it's towards the building, it's just uh three quick points. One, is it possible to put a four-way stop at Perchuron at Founder's Path? I think that would stop most of the traffic, or at least try to slow it down, I should say.
We'd have to have the engineer look at that, you know, like, one thing I only caution is, stop signs to slow traffic never work. They actually make it more dangerous, uh, cause people, stop signs need to be put where people expect them. So, I'm not saying that's not a place he could do it, we can take a look at it, but I don't think, I think we need Matt to look at that.
I agree, because you, you figure people are gonna stop, but like Matt says, if it's not where a normal stop sign is. That's where you have the tendency to see someone that's not used to that area blowing that stop sign. And especially in a residential area, it, it's would be, you know, if this was the collector road, I, I can see that. But as a residential street, it could give you that false sense of security.
My gut tells me when I look at this, that you'd probably have a stop sign coming from the north and from the south. Uh, because there's more of that connection out to the uh collector road out to the west, but we can take a look at that.
Okay, and then the second question I had for you is Savannah Way, what was the reasoning why it couldn't be extended down to Founder's Path, is it cost, is it? Was cost, okay.
I mean, you know.
It will get extended, and it's probably not too long till it does.
I know that from our personal perspective is that once that would be in, honestly, that'd be the way we would even go to get to two twelve. Cause at least then we have a controlled roundabout to get out, you know, so we're not trying to, you know, dart across.
You know, there's a large development on the south side of this area is, is already in the works. So, now it's just some infill in the middle, so. And if that school, if the school changes, all of this will change fast.
We would have normally expected the north side to get done first, um, but we've sort of seen it flip with the south side of Savannah Way getting done first. Or it appears that it's gonna be that way. And, um, but I, I don't think it's gonna be that long before that gets done.
Okay, awesome. And then the third and last one's more of a personal request, still not looking for that pathway down to Shrine of Brewery.
How about a zip line?
That would be awesome.
Let's see you zip up that line. All right, thank you. And uh, any, anybody else, not, uh, I entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Councilmember Hatfield, and this is, sorry, we have two. Uh, so this one, we're gonna do twenty twenty-five dash twenty, twenty twenty-two dash twenty-five approving River Town. Preliminary plot.
And I'll second that motion.
So, a motion by Councilmember Hatfield, second by Councilmember Regra, uh, again, twenty twenty-two dash twenty-five approving uh River Town Heights. Discussion. Hearing that all in favor, signify by saying aye. Post same sign. Carries, now I need a motion to adopt ordinance number uh ten eleven approving, approving the rezoning of, of River Town Heights. From open to planned residential district number eighty-two or PRD eighty-two.
Still moves.
Motion by Councilmember Wong. Second by Councilmember Hubbard, again, this is ordinance ten eleven, uh, rezoning, discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Post same sign. Carries, thanks folks. Appreciate it. All right, we're gonna keep right on a roll in here, and we are on item F, adopt resolution. Twenty twenty-two dash twenty-nine approving concept plan for Hazeltine Plaza Apartments.
I was just thinking in my mind, we put a sign out on the door out there that says pull and push, and we probably should have put one there too. Sorry, the uh, uh, Mayor, Councilmember, the item in front of you uh tonight is a concept plan. Uh, for uh looking at the parcel at the north, uh, it'd be, or I guess it'd be the southeast corner. Of uh, or southwest corner of Hunter Mark and uh Hazelton Boulevard. So this is part of the uh overall uh, uh, area. Commercial area where Kohl's, McDonald's, uh, that area is up there, this is a uh, a uh. Plan for an apartment complex, and uh was uh, the concept plan was being uh recommended for approval from the planning commission. So I'll turn it over to Liz to present this item.
And I will actually turn it over to Nate. His toes wet into Chaska Planning.
All right.
Later. Yeah, so as Matt, Matt introduced and Liz handed over to me, uh, we're presenting to you, Mayor and councilmembers, is Hazelton Plaza Apartments. This is being proposed by Trident Development, they've done a few projects in town and in fact in this vicinity um before. Uh, this is a concept plan. Of course, I selected the wrong thing. So to fami- familiarize yourself with the site, if you aren't already, um, you've got the city's Loop Golf Course up here. Uh, Hazelton National Golf Club to the east, uh, the site right here, which is currently situated. As a pad for additional um commercial uh big box space that would go next to Kohl's. And then parking to serve that uh future development, that was how it was planned. Um, so as I mentioned, you've got Kohl's there, McDonald's, the Aldi's, Chipotle and Starbucks development that happened a few years back. Hazelton Center Office Complex to the north, and then you've got um Chaska Heights Senior Living. Highland Shores Condos and the Highland Shores Apartments to the east. Forty-one going north, south, um, on the east side, or I'm sorry, the west side of the site. Hazelton Boulevard and Hunter Mark Road, um, going north, south to the east of the site. We are at the first step in the pla, in the process, so at the concept uh phase of our three-step process tonight. A little bit of background, um, back in two thousand and five was when this uh, the site Hazelton Plaza. Received concept of plan approval, the idea was that it would have retail, um, sort of a main street area. In that northwest corner of the site, which, which is now Aldi's and uh Chipotle and Starbucks. The idea for this area has always, has been really from the start of the concept plan, that um, it's an area that has pedestrian accessibility. Within it, um, but really focused on that commercial um services, bringing that to the community. Um, preliminary and final plat happened in two thousand and seven, that was when Kohl's came in as part of that. Moving ahead to twenty twelve was when we saw McDonald's and Park Dental be approved and move into the site. Fast forward a little bit further to twenty eighteen, um, is when we saw Aldi's, Chipotle and Starbucks added to the developer. So you can see how that phasing occurred as it pertains to the plat, um, with tonight's being the one remaining open. Uh, lot on the site um to the east. So, existing conditions on the site, I walked through, you know, some of the surrounding area, but it is a four uh and three-quarter acre site. The current owner is Chaska Investment, uh, which is the developer who's done um this whole area. Uh, it is currently zoned PCD fifteen, uh, which the intent of that district is to create a high-quality, pedestrian-friendly. Lifestyle retail center that serves the day-to-day needs of Chaska residents for retail goods and services. You see the permitted uses that are listed there, among them are not residential, so um the zoning would need to be amended. Or rezoned um in order to accommodate this project, I think it would probably, we'd be looking towards an amendment rather than a rezoning in this case. The current primary use of the site itself is, like I mentioned earlier, a parking lot, and then also those pads um that were planned for commercial development. Um, for something that would complement Kohl's. You've got the site access, you, there's two points of access off of Hunter Mark, um, one to the south of the, of the proposed development. And then one um to the middle or the north of it, there's also a site access off of Hazelton Boulevard. Um, which receives most of the traffic that comes in and out accessing the commercial users today. So the current request is a concept plan for market rate rental housing community containing a hundred and sixteen to a hundred and twenty-eight dwelling units. With this being at a concept phase, the developer hasn't quite, uh, you know, nailed into how many units specifically. Uh, contained within a four-story apartment building, as I mentioned before, residential is not currently permitted under the current zoning. Um, so we would be looking at amendment, um, if we are to move forward, the comprehensive plan land use guidance is for mixed residential today. So as you can see, um, wanna dive into that guidance for the land use a little bit further, the whole Hazelton Plaza area is guided under that mixed residential. And I will get into uh what that means, also, as you look to the east of uh State Highway forty-one. That is, I'm sorry, to the west, that is all of the same mixed-use residential. And um, the western side of Hazelton uh Gulf is guided for that. Mixed residential as well. So the intention of that is integration of a more than one land use, um, either vertically or horizontally. So you think horizontally across a developed landscape, um vertically within a building itself. Land use is allowed our residential, commercial, office, uh, park, civic and open space. Low, medium and high-density residential uses are allowed in that uh guided area, land use for mixed residential. Uh, density range allowed is anywhere from three to forty dwelling units per acre. It does state in the, in the land use guidance that residential should generally represent a minimum of seventy-five percent of the overall mixed-use area. However, there is an exception uh described in that where medium and high-density residential is part of the development. We wouldn't be looking for that minimum of seventy-five percent uh use there. So to get into describing the concept plan for you, uh, as I mentioned before, the building is proposed to have somewhere between a hundred and sixteen, a hundred and twenty, twenty-eight. Units in a four-story building, uh, they are proposing two hundred and sixty-eight total parking spaces, a hundred and eighty of those being in the surface. Um, so you see some substantial surface parking in this portion of the proposal. Eighty-eight would be garage or underneath uh the building, sub, uh, subsurface parking um spaces in that way. There is a reciprocal easement agreement where Kohl's uh must approve the proposed use and also the impacts to the access. So something that they will be reviewing would be the access uh to the middle of the site or the northerly access. And then also the southern access here, in addition to their ability to uh review the use itself. Staff is suggesting that we would want to see clear separation of the residential parking from the commercial, so today, uh, that commercial parking is situated. So that it serves the commercial area as a whole, right? Um, what we want to try and make sure, we would be avoiding if this is to proceed, is that someone doesn't maybe view. This kind of westernly area of the parking is more advantageous for commercial due to its proximity to Kohl's. Um, so trying to make sure that we have that, that clear separation, so that the residents um can expect that they're going to have parking when they arrive at their house.
I think separation also prevents, cause I look at this and think about, people are gonna come in uh forty-one, take their right-hand bag, McDonald's and Chipotle. And then wind through the parking lot to get to their apartment. And that's not good, so like, I think that separation's important there too.
Yeah, so one of the things that we've talked about with the developer already, and I think we'd, we'd be looking for in the preliminary, would be that internal circulation component also. So, designing this site so that, you know, the more desirable in, access um point is, is really probably this access here. Um, for the residential use, right, um, for that exact reason that you're pointing out, John. Um, we want to avoid the residential users kind of traversing and adding to the traffic that's already congested at sometimes. Um, at this point onto Hazelton Boulevard, ideally, this remains the i, the ideal and primary location for that commercial user. Um, and then this location would shift towards, you know, the ideal location for the residential users. Another component on that point will be the, the access to the south currently, that is an access for the delivery trucks. That are, that are coming to Kohl's primarily, um, and I think we'd wanna make sure that we're, we're sort of limiting our. And I think we'd want to make sure that we're, we're sort of limiting or decreasing the opportunity for that conflict point, where you could see that delivery truck traffic kind of intermixing with that residential traffic. And we'd want to see that there's some separation there.
So you won't be able to get into the Kohl's parking lot from that, like, that where you're thinking will be the main drive for the residents?
So presently, the way that the building is being proposed would go over the access and we'll get into that. So this ends up being a drive under of the building?
But will it go through to the Kohl's parking lot? Because I think the argument that most people come up from the, where like McDonald's and Starbucks is, half of people do, but there's a, I come up from this side and anybody that lives over there, you're going to come in there. So I'm just thinking, I mean...
That's one of the reasons that Kohl's has a, has the ability to okay this.
Right. So the reciprocal easement agreement would say that Kohl's has, has this access.
What does that experience like for, people are going to be cross, I'm, I'm concerned.
Yep. And so I think, I think moving forward, if this were to proceed, we would want to see that this continues to be an access that the commercial users can, can get through.
But then people are going to be crossing from their cars where people, commercial users are, sorry, I'm going to bump that, users are driving through to get their morning starbies.
That, that would be, yeah.
Well, depending on where the access to the building was.
Like if you could put the access, like if...
Oh, yeah, that's true. I keep thinking, forgetting about this part.
Yeah, because it's still this concept, right?
Yeah, I mean, that's, I mean, that's exactly the type of concepts I think are, or comments are important to point out is, you know, what are the things that, that stand out as being concerns?
Yep.
And there is underground, did I miss that?
Yeah.
There is, okay.
Also, as you see here, as you approach...
Yeah, okay, I thought there was, but then in my brain I dismissed it for some reason. Okay. So hopefully, most people, I mean, it's obviously not always everyone, but there'll be a great deal of people parking in there, probably.
There's eighty-eight spaces currently proposed for the below-building parking to serve one hundred and sixteen to one hundred and twenty-eight units. So, you know, a portion of those units would receive an underground parking space. The rest would need to park in this area.
So is that as you rent? You sign up for an underground parking?
Probably pay extra for it.
Usually probably pay extra for it.
No, that's what I mean.
Oh, yeah.
I would pay extra for it, but I just wondered how that, is it a lottery or? Because I, I just wonder about that entrance where the trucks are. I don't know, the better on the other side, I don't know. I mean, that's, I'll leave that to you guys, but if you're worried about the truck traffic...
I think that's something that's going to be, need to be understood. And one of the, one of the conditions that we've got in the, in the approval language tonight is to do a circulation study to understand that. I think, you know, the trucking could be a component of that study is to understand what is the current level and volume and timing, right, of that trucking and those deliveries to Kohl's, so we can understand, you know, where, where those potential conflicts would arise.
When I think to Councilmember Hatfield's point, too, is that that circulation should also be looking at pedestrian circulation, too.
Um, this, I mean, this maybe is too much for concept, but that little tan where there's like a one and a three, is that going to be like the lobby where like mailboxes are and things?
Correct. This, this is proposed to be the main kind of entrance lobby right now.
So I guess, yeah. I like that they can get into the building on this side, but that also, because people are going to go where their mailbox is.
Yep.
And where the main lobby is. So I don't know if there's an opportunity to shift that where the majority of the parking is, something like that, but I would be less concerned about all that parking and people crossing where there's going to be people flying through there. And they do just, I mean, that's another spot where it's kind of, you can just drive right through to your, whatever you're having for dinner. If that lobby was shifted, I don't know how possible that is, but that's just a thought.
Yeah, that's a good question, is, you know, the folks who are parking here, what is the access or the entry point for them? And if they do have that desire to get into that lobby, that's going to be an important crossing here. I mean, we all talked about, you've got these perpendicular spaces here. I think we'll want to take a close look at that with concern of folks backing out into what is going to be a major, you know, sort of access and cross, crossway for that development as well.
Yeah, I mean, I'd almost look at it from the perspective, taking that lobby area and it's shaping it south of that main driveway. And then you could, you know, kind of like, you could, you know, maybe change the shape, shape of the building a little bit, so that way you could like pull that down a little bit. So basically, that road goes along that frontage of that building and there's no parking spaces along there, but then everyone can enter the lobby from that south side of the parking lot, so there's no conflicts there. But, you know, this is still concept right now, so there's still room to play. But, you know, I think that, you know, elimination or movement of that lobby area would be critical to protecting that right-of-way and also reducing pedestrian and traffic conflicts.
Yep, that's a good point. One other component that has not, I've not gotten to yet would be, there is an existing pylon sign, I don't know if it's to the north or the south of this access, I'm blanking right now, but it's, it's over here, which provides signage for all of the existing tenants of this site. As a part of this development, that will need to be looked at and understood as to what is the appropriate placement and design of a sign like that as it relates to, you know, what this building is going to do. And I imagine that's going to be something that Kohl's is going to want to weigh in on as well.
I mean, has there been any flavor from Kohl's? Do we know, or is this a...
My understanding is the developer has reached out to Kohl's and tried to make contact, but I don't think that you've connected yet. Excuse me? Oh, you've got an update, so we'll, we'll let Roger give that update as we get through. So some, some sample project exteriors of other projects that are in the Twin Cities that developers looking at, especially to understand how that pass-through works. This is a location in Minneapolis where there is a commercial center that is underneath that pass-through. So that is how that, you know, one example of that occurring. Another location where you've got an apartment building that has a pass-through is Prairie Bluff Senior Living at Eden Prairie. I believe on past this pass-through is parking for this facility, so it's a little bit of a different context and demand, but that is an example of how the building is doing that. Another location in Coon Rapids, you see the pass-through example here. This is really a pedestrian-oriented pass-through, so I don't think this is designed for vehicular traffic to be going through, but it does provide, you know, an idea, an example of how a building can be designed with that opening.
Is that pass-through tall enough for a semi? That if like a semi made a wrong turn and missed that and think, I'll just make a left here, right?
As, as we're looking at this site that's being proposed here in Chaska, we, that would need to be a component, is that that height is appropriate there.
Yeah, because I could see like someone, you know, like, you know, missing that turn and just say, I'll just make the left turn and, or make her that turn in whether it's left or right. Yeah.
So here's some ideas of how, you know, how the developers, just taking an early look at the massing and the scale of this facility as it relates to, this would be Kohl's right here, McDonald's, this is the office complex, Aldi's, Chipotle and Starbucks. So how it fits in with the rest of the site from a 3D perspective. Here you can see how that pass-through begins to look. Again, this is really an early, early take on it, but just to begin to start to understand how that could be situated. The building location, I think, presents an opportunity to relate to the city's Loop Golf Course with it being right on the corner. This is the loop here, so understanding how that, you know, view and visual relation is going to occur there. You also have Hazelton National Golf Course and then you've got the trail at the corner of Hundred Mark and Hazelton that the building can interact with. The design would need to show consistency with the design scale and massing between the other buildings and existing surrounding development pattern. It would be required to have three hundred and sixty-degree architecture for all sides of the building with it being really exposed from all sides. Developer has proposed incorporating Chaska Brick Mix, which is great. I think that's something that we like to see. We will need to meet the multifamily building design and material requirements as a whole in addition to that. And then attention is going to be needed towards that drive under a breezeway to ensure the noise doesn't become an issue for residents. And that sight line, sight lines are maintained for vehicular traffic going both in and out of that site. So the developer's talked about different ideas of how that space above the breezeway would be used. It may not ultimately be residences, it could be, you know, some of the communal space. So you don't have, you know, kind of trying to reduce some of that concern of noise. But even still, I think if, if you're, you know, using that space for gathering or something, you want to make sure that it's designed appropriately to handle that. So a lot of these things I've touched on, but to provide a summary, things that we'd want, that we'll be working on as we move towards the preliminary, probably first and foremost is understanding Kohl's position on it. They do need to, you know, be in agreement with what's being proposed. We'd be looking to amend the zoning to include the multifamilies of permitted use, compliance of the building and design, design and material requirements for multifamily residential, cooperation of three hundred and sixty-degree architecture, understanding that breezeway and the soundproofing, that we don't have too much conflict with the residents, ensuring that adequate sightlines are preserved for all access points onto Hundred Mark Road, developing a landscaping plan that would meet city requirements, including adequate screening and landscaping along the edges of, of the development, incorporating planting islands into the surface parking, developing lighting plan, public utility plan to the site, stormwater management will need to meet all of our standards, complete that traffic impact study and traffic circulation plan, and looking at encouraging residents to really use those Hundred Mark access points as the primary access and limiting conflict with commercial patrons and delivery vehicles to the site. Develop a parking plan that limits and discourages cross-access parking to ensure that the residents have the access that they will need. Construction traffic plan will need to be coordinated and approved by the city engineer, and that's something as, especially that, that breezeway is developed and also as the parking is going under that access, needing to understand how that is going to work. Relocation plan for that existing pylon sign is located on the north access on Hundred Mark Road, in a way that's going to be acceptable to all the existing businesses in Hazelton Plaza and also meets city side ordinance as well. So with that, we do have a motion in front of you to approve or adopt Resolution two thousand and twenty-two, twenty-nine, which will approve the concept plan for Hazelton Plaza Apartments, development proposal by Trident Development. And if that is approved, we would then be moving towards preliminary. However, that, you know, that timeline is not determined yet. Any questions, comments from council? Also, we have the developer here tonight to answer any questions.
I do have some questions. So could you go back to the site map, please?
This one?
Yeah, and so, shoot, you can't, okay, we can't see the, the Starbucks and McDonald's, or you see McDonald's, not the Starbucks and Chipotle. The reason why I wanted to see those, that part was because, that's just the scaling.
Dirk, so?
Kind, not really.
Look at the one that has the 3D model, because it has all the scales of all those buildings.
Are you thinking height wise?
No, it's, I'll stay on this one here. I think that, so if you could move your mouse where the green space to the right of the Kohl's building, next to the truck dock. So that spot there, and then there's the wall along the edge of Kohl's, north of the truck dock, that space there. So, yeah, so between those two spaces, I could see that there was, there seemed to be in proportion enough space there that like that green space is about the same footprint as like the Chipotle on the other side of, the Chipotle or the Starbucks. So I could foresee like enough space on the edge there to develop maybe like three small like shops, like retail shops. And I feel like this particular area is one of the few like retail areas remaining in Chaska, so I'd want to preserve or make sure that we still had the opportunity to use some of that space, you know, understanding that there's, you know, residential there. Because I could foresee that, you know, I, I get asked all the time, like, well, when are we getting more restaurants, more shops? I mean, those are things that the people want. And as our population increases, I mean, we just approved like a hundred and twenty homes in terms of, you know, more homes to be built and we know that we already have some other ones in the works now, that there's going to be just increased demand for, you know, whether it's, you know, small like, you know, shops or restaurants, things like that.
I think the issue here, though, is going to be parking.
Yes, and so that was part of my question in terms of what was, you know, what's the parking, you know, what's the parking requirement? Because...
So what you're showing, seeing for parking, I think, is pretty close to what they have for requirement for the building.
They're, they're just over the two, because what's, what Chaska currently requires is two spaces per unit of multifamily housing.
Yeah.
What's being proposed tonight would get them just over, assuming they built that full one hundred and twenty-eight units, that would get them just over what would be required. So the, at a two per...
So you don't get that restaurant because they won't have the parking?
Well, and part of, and this is concept, right? So the question is, is that, you know, like, for example, could you, you know, you know, overbuild like the, the garage under that with, not necessarily building a building on top of it, right? So the building, like, so the garage space under the building allowed for more parking under that building footprint or, I mean, there's different things you could play with, right? Or just, you know, increase in surface parking closer to the building, stuff like that. But, you know, I, I mean, ultimately, I, I'd still like to see something where we could still be able to fit in a couple more shops.
I think you shouldn't forget that there is one more site that we don't talk about here that, as we've looked at it, I think is a better location for restaurants, is at Pioneer and Hundred Mark at the Pumpkin Patch site. That, that, you know, Pioneer definitely gets a lot more traffic than either Hazelton or Hundred Mark here. And that if you were going to see a restaurant, they'd probably desire to be down there before they desire to be up here.
Don't disagree, I'm just saying that in, at some point, and I've seen this happen to other communities, where you have a spot like this, that once that spot gets taken, then someone says, I really want to build something, right? You know, this, this becomes the infill opportunity to say, you know, could we squeeze something in here? And I'd still like to figure out a way to make sure that when that, when that time arrives, that we could still squeeze something in here, because I think this would be a good location. Because let's say you have, whether you have someone golfing over across the way, doing a grab of sandwiches, coffee, whatever, just lounge afterwards, you know, this is a good place to like, to have something, right? Some sort of amenity shops. And not a lot of them, I mean, it's like I said, there's not a lot of space for something really big, but to have some availability, some, some retail there wouldn't be a bad thing. It doesn't mean you have to develop it now, but to cut out and have proof parking available so that we could, that's all I'm asking for.
I guess something that maybe could be explored. You know, I know that the developer hasn't been intending to do a mix commercial or residential, it's not what's being proposed.
That's what I was going to speak up to.
But I think, you know, I think, you know, we could certainly explore that, you know, how that would work or whether there's an opportunity here for that.
Yeah, because I, I'm thinking long-term, I'm not thinking just this, but long-term, there's, you know, it was, this is one of those opportunities, because there's not just parking here, but if you actually look at that broader lot, there's a lot of parking around there. It doesn't necessarily mean that they're going to, you know, it's, you know, people tend to move and, you know, where they're seeing, hey, there's a shop or retail or something, they'll go there, they'll find parking as long as there's enough in that broader lot. So I think the question is making sure that, you know, we have it accessible or have, you know, painted walkways or whatever it is to make sure we can get to those and if there's a spot for that retail we stood up. So it's just the proof that we could put it there conceptually at some point, that's what I'm looking for.
I think it'd be really good to hear, especially from Mike, from Chaska Investment's side, I mean, because to me, as I look at this plan, the, the, you know, the stuff that we're talking about as far as, you know, where the entrance is put and where the parking is, I mean, those are all details we can work through. To me, the fundamental question on this plan is...
It's supposed to be retail.
It, it's, it's a retail site that's being talked about for housing.
Yeah, I agree.
And I, I think, to, to me, I think it, it makes sense to have Mike come up and talk a little bit about where they've been from Chaska Investment's side and looking at this as a retail center, because, you know, could you potentially put something in? Maybe, but to me, there's a bigger, there's a bigger issue here that, that, you know, is, is really sort of the big question here, is can you go from a commercial site, a retail site, to a housing site or maybe a mixed-use site? Turn it over to Mike.
Thanks, Mike. Mike Benson, Chaska Investment, ninety-five thirty-one West Seventy-Eighth at Eden Prairie. Good evening, Mayor, council members, staff. Nate, you did a great job. Thank you. I'll speak specifically to the timeline that...
You disconnected yourself.
Okay, I'm sorry, Mike.
You have to do it blind without... You have to do it blind without seeing anything. Well, I could probably do it. But the evolution, I'll, I'll insert some things into the timeline. And specifically, I'll insert work sessions that I've had with city staff. Probably goes back to two thousand eight, if you recall, that was the, the market crash recession. Two thousand ten-ish, I would say, was the explosion of online retail, which forever changed the retail market, brick and mortar. And I would say probably two thousand twelve is when I started working with city staff. Kevin Ringwald, Liz, Matt, I think we actually hosted a workshop in your office or in a conference room where we also brought in C D R E, a couple of well-respected seasoned brokers to comment on the marketplace and what was thriving, what wasn't, et cetera. So I'll speak specifically to, Kohl's was built, they opened up in two thousand seven. And historically with Kohl's, you saw famous footwear, Maurice's Dress Barn, other junior box retailers come in that complemented the Kohl's stores, okay? And that all changed. I had five letters of intent on my desk in two thousand seven when Kohl's was built. The recession happened, everybody put the brakes on and they were never heard from again because of the Amazon, the world, et cetera. So I think that with this forever changed land, retail landscape, those work sessions that we had with staff were brainstorming sessions and that, okay, what makes sense here with this particular pad site east of Kohl's? In two thousand eighteen, all the Chipotle and Starbucks went in. It's a hard corner for the site. Grocery and single tenant is still working in community centers and neighborhood centers. Junior boxes is forever gone. It really is. So again, how do we work with four, four and three quarters acres? What makes sense? So some of the ideas that we came up with, hospitality, hotels. Obviously, the pandemic halted that forever. Medical office, well, Chaska's pretty much fully developed. Professional office, that's not going to work. I approached directly CBS and Walgreens. They are actually downsizing, closing stores. So again, we're thinking of highest and best use. And multifamily came into the, more and more came into the picture. Can it work with retail? Yes, it can. I think that some of the designs that Roger showed in the exhibits that he provided, I think it works. The traffic is a big, big concern. We got to figure that out. Traffic and pedestrian. How do you get from a parking spot to the lobby of a building, the entrance of the building? I get that. But, you know, like Chaska Commons, there's a traffic, there's a huge circulation pattern in there that works. You got to navigate it a couple of times to figure it out, where do you want to go? G N C to wherever, right? Perkins. We had our neighborhood meeting there at Perkins and I went that way afterwards. So anyway, again, the marketplace is, is the big issue that we've struggled with since the genesis of Hazelton Plaza. Nate and I had a great chat about it, walked you through it, Liz, so. And like I said, at least a half a dozen conversations with, with staff. Let's figure it out.
I, I guess I, I'm not a developer, but, and this is going to sound silly. I'm a wedding planner in this area that has to find hotel blocks for clients. And all of the hotels in Shakopee, Eden Prairie and Chan Hassen are always booked throughout the whole summer. I can't get room blocks unless I am twelve to eighteen months out. So I'm hesitant to say that a hotel wouldn't work, but, and I, I guess I didn't picture retail. I just think this is such an important corner in our city with the loop, which we've put a lot of investment into being right there. And then Hazelton, which is such a huge draw to our community at times and in, you know, certainly in the summer, that it's, I just want to be careful about what we do on this corner and that we do the right thing. And I'm not saying that's not residential because I, I think residential done right there would be really cool. Especially there are definitely people that would want to live in right there with those two golf courses. But I don't know, I guess I'm just, I, I didn't picture retail. I think you're spot on with like the re, the smaller box retail is gone. But for me, I was, I think I always pictured a restaurant there or a hotel or something. And it's just such an important corner that we just have to get it right in my mind. Like I said, I'm not against residential by any means. I just think it's really important how it's done there.
I agree. I was just going to say, I appreciate your comments. One thing that I'll add, so the two C D R E signs that are there, one of them is falling down. I've been trying to get them to fix it for six months or four months or something, so that'll be fixed. But since two thousand eighteen, I've had at best tiger kickers. Tiger kickers meaning people just saying, hey, what, would it support a car wash? This current zoning doesn't allow for that, or the current guidance, I should say. The mixed residential guidance doesn't allow for any auto service, which is one of the, one of the retail segments that is thriving today is auto. Kohl's won't allow it either in their R E A. So we have two issues with that. Daycare was a possibility. I think we had a prospect with daycare, but you've got New Horizon a block away on the corner of Pioneer and Forty-One and a couple of other daycare facilities close by in Chaska as well. So those are really the, the two that come to mind that we're interested in. So in four years, it's, it's tough. Retail is tough right now.
That one of the conversations we had was, was ironically the, was on this end of town, which is redevelopment of where the old Best Western used to be. I can't remember if it was like the Suites or whatever. What was, was it the, the longest extended state hotel?
Town Square.
Town Square, right. So.
Could be anything tomorrow.
Right, could be anything tomorrow. And so, and one of the conversations we had with the owners was that, well, you know, redeveloping into something in terms of hotel is like not viable because, you know, whether it's like Hilton, you know, Hilton or Marriott or whatever, when they come in with their, one of their smaller brands like the Hampton Inn or something like that, they want to develop, you know, a greenfield, they want to develop something new. So, you know, then ironically, you know, because now Oak Ridge closed as a conference center means that, you know, there's, there is a real kind of, you know, there's a deficit of hotel space that used to be here because this pandemic happened, right? So, you know, the, you know, the question is that is there an opportunity there for something, you know, like them to come in and look at this as an opportunity too? I mean, I'm just throwing it out there.
So we did do a hotel study. I don't know if people remember when we came back and did that. I can't remember exactly when it was, but it wasn't that long ago. But basically, it said that, you know, at the time, we had, we did have Oak Ridge, we did have, I think it was when Norwood, when it was Norwood and then we had Super Raid. And they said we had too many units that were in the community. One of the things that I think was clear in that is if units want to way, where they want to be is out on the highway. I mean, because there's, i- if you think about how people are coming into the Twin Cities and where hotels typically are, they want to be at, they want to be at forty-four and, and two twelve.
They want to be where Richview is, the two twelve medical center, right?
I mean, actually, I think they just want to be at an interchange on a freeway.
Yeah, well, anywhere there's an interchange.
Yeah, I mean, that's, I, I think sites like this, honestly, I think it's one of the challenges that Oak Ridge had as a hotel is it worked as a conference center.
Nobody knew that was a hotel. I don't even think it counts to call that a hotel.
Yeah, I think that's fair. But I, when they tried to, when they, when they lost the conference center stuff and they tried to go to a hotel, it's just so hidden from where you want a hotel to be. And when you think about where hotels tend to lend themselves, Spain and Chan Hassen, they're right on five. In Shakopee, they're right on one sixty-nine. And if you don't get those areas, the, the hotels just don't, they don't even want to look at the spot.
So, so really, you know, and I completely agree with what you said about like the small, the junior boxes. I mean, that we saw that market just evaporate just like that. So, you know, I, but I think that there's still opportunity for some, like the small retail shops. But I'm not saying that you just, we necessarily need to build them now because I'm looking at, thinking of this as the long game, right? That, you know, whatever we put in that corner spot today, we'll probably have additional, you know, users or, excuse me, users that will come in for some use later on that we, I think that there's still, there's still good sites on, against the edge of that building because it kind of feels like, that building feels like a very unfinished building with those pads up. Not with the pads out there, which is the way the wall is just like this kind of facade out there. That it still feels like there's opportunity there that I don't want to like pass up. But that said, you know, what goes in that corner space? You know, I still have like mixed feelings about it because, you know, could it be residential? Sure, it could be residential. Could it, is there something else we're missing? Could it be a mixed use of something residential and retail? Maybe, I don't know. I mean, just, I, I think that you're, you're not far off in terms of what that market is because, you know, and obviously, clearly, there's still a demand for affordable housing units. And high density does offer that. I think the question is, is that are we necessarily addressing?
These wouldn't be affordable, though.
I was going to say.
These are, these are market rate.
These are going to overlook one of the best.
And let me, and yeah, let me frame that too because, I mean, it's, there's, there's affordable housing that's subsidized, right? But then there's more affordable because it's market rate because someone can't get afford to a house, but there's.
Right, but you know what rents are going at in this area.
Totally agree with you.
More than my mortgage.
I was like, they're more than, and I understand for people in their situation, this is all that they have, but that doesn't mean it's affordable.
It's kind of, affordable is relative.
It is a relative.
It's a very relative, because you look at affordable and like, you know, you look at affordable and like, what's affordable in a diner, right? You know, it's a kind of a different question. So, you know, but I'm looking at affordable here relatively speaking. It's still higher density. It's, I'm assuming that market rate's still going to be pretty expensive, but it's still less than a house.
I mean, I, yeah, I think it's fair to look at it like it's another varied stock of housing, like opportunity for people to come in and live.
It's another tier of housing for sure.
I can tell you what we see along, if you go up Hazelton Boulevard and especially as you get into like the Carver's Greens area, some of the smaller like attached townhomes up there. What we see a lot of up there is people who have their summer home there because they're a member at Hazelton. And then, you know, then in the winter time, they're not, not there. So I, I don't think that's atypical up in that area to see people living in that housing as sort of a summer housing because they belong to Hazelton.
Do you think this would be like summer housing for people who may be members of Hazelton or something?
I don't know. I mean, that's, I mean, it's certainly something we've seen in the past. You know, the people live in, down south in the winter and they want an easy turnkey option when, you know, when they're up here in the summertime and I don't know. But that is what we've seen up the road.
Can I ask like an oddly specific question to you in regards to this? Will you allow these tenants to have dogs? Yeah, that might be a question for you. It's, it's going to be weird because I'm going to go through a whole thing, but I know.
Maybe Roger can speak to why he feels that apartments can work within this site as a highest and best use and how it can integrate with the rest of the retail there. Mr. Mayor, members of City Council, Roger Fink with Trident Development, representing the applicant tonight. So far, thank you for your input. It's been very valuable. Thank you, Nate, for the introduction. And Mike, thank you for stepping up and helping with the conversation here. Been in the housing business for almost twenty years. I was also in the lodging business for seven years before that. And have been able to identify and evaluate apartment sites over the years to try to decide where a good location might be. Obviously, the first indication is there a growing market for housing? That's usually driven by jobs being created in the marketplace, which then drives the population to that community. We see that happening in Chaska right now. We also had previous experience, not only with senior housing, independent senior housing, but also with market rate housing with the Lake Jonathan Flats. Had a very nice experience with that. It's very, very well accepted by the renter base here in Chaska. And so we have confidence that another property somewhat similar to that would be well received by the, by the marketplace. When Mike introduced us to this location, we noticed that it had some very obvious amenities close by. There was employment close by, there was food, food service, there's retail, there's recreation and there's good access to highways and medical service. So, you know, you don't always find all those great combinations for an apartment site. Sometimes it's too far out of where the commercial action is. And so we, we really liked this location because of the proximity to all of those traffic connections and the retail service and the recreation aspect of, of this location. That's why we really think it would be a successful housing site long term.
Okay, answer my question, though. Will you guys allow dogs in this, in this apartment? And I'm going to go into something here.
I know, that's probably a leading question.
Yeah, it is a leading question, but it's one that I, I know we're early, but I would love to just maybe get a yes or a no or possibly.
We have seen in the apartment industry this real growing trend for people having pets. And if you're not offering a pet-friendly community, you're going to miss out on a lot of potential renters. So, yes, we will figure out how to accommodate pets.
Yeah, and, and I think looking at the plans, if this goes as it's kind of the intended plan is here that it's laid out. You guys do have a lot of nice green space that kind of is surrounding the apartment complex. Reason why I note this is I saw this as my, my husband owns a movie theater that is next to a like six-floor apartment unit and it has zero green space. And so where do you think the dogs go to use the bathroom? Over in the retail or the, you know, adjoining like commercial property? And so it's about being good neighbors. So my concern, I guess, leading into it is when you talk about residential and you talk about commercial, is how do those two things play together with, you know, with parking? We talked about parking, we talked about pedestrian traffic, but just people living there and, you know, they live there and so they're going to want to walk their pets, they're going to want to be outside, they're going to want to do their thing. So what kind of, you know, layout for them to be out there? And how does that coincide with the retail that's adjoining it? And if you're talking about adding little units, then how does that fit into the puzzle? Well, we're not, you know, neighbors upset because someone's dumping their trash in the dumpster. You know, little tiny little things. I know I'm getting in way into the details now in its concept. But these are kind of, these are kind of the concerns that I have. I'm not totally opposed to the idea of residential being right in this area. I think it's in a great spot, being next to Kohl's. It's just, you know, how does this, how does the puzzle piece fit? So that this works for everyone and that it's laid out so, like you said, there's separation of traffic for the people that are parking there versus the people that are coming in. These are all the, the things that I'm looking at when I, when I see this site plan before me. But, you know, personally, as a business owner, you know, sometimes the, as a small, small business owner, you know, the idea of building a building can be kind of like overwhelming. Sometimes having something already laid out so a tenant can move in. I asked, you know, Nate, what the vacancy percentage was in Chaska for commercial space and it's low. You said maybe last meeting or so. He didn't have any official numbers and everything like that. So, I mean, I'm not opposed to the retail or the, you know, residential piece of things. But I also think, you know, this is kind of geared towards retail. And I just worry about the people living and then, you know, business owners, Kohl's. I know Kohl's is a little bit of a different business, but just having residential next to retail like that, just, it's gotta be thoughtful.
What is your update, what is your update on Kohl's? Maybe this might tell us some.
Sure. We reached out to Kohl's, like Nate said, uh, quite a few weeks ago to find out who is the representative? Who's gonna be the person we choose our point person, who we're gonna talk to? We, um, weren't really getting well-connected. The primary contact that we once had, had moved on, wasn't there anymore. Um, so we left some voicemail messages, we sent a certified letter, uh, which was required under the reciprocal easement agreement. If we intend to do anything, we need to notify them by a certified letter and who's our point of contact. Lo and behold, we did get a call back. Uh, we've talked to that person for a little while, Brian, um, remember, that's his last name, excuse me.
That's right.
Uh, Mr. Brian. Uh, he turned us over then finally to another individual who came forward recently and said, I'm gonna be your contact person. Send me your concept plan and we'll review and get back to you. So, made some progress there. Uh, as late as last week, I believe it was, um, Kohl's made a response back to us about our concept plan. The only concern that they raised at that time, and I'm not saying they're done. But was focused on their southerly entrance point and their delivery semi-circulation movement. How do we get in, back in, pull out in, without being obstructed? So, we asked our civil engineer to do a traffic or a truck movement exhibit to show how an eighteen-wheeler would maneuver through that area. And indeed, we found by doing that, that we would need to modify the curb line somewhat in order to accommodate that truck movement. A very minor adjustment, in my opinion, probably eats away a little bit at that extra, uh, amount of retail space that's there. Um, so we sent that back to them and saying, okay, here's how we can solve that traffic circulation, excuse me, we can, that truck movement circulation. What other questions you have? We're waiting for more response. So, I'm encouraged that we've got them engaged in a dialogue right now. Um, I also wanna go on to tell you that we held a neighborhood meeting a couple of weeks ago, prior to our planning commission. Uh, wasn't very well attended, but prior to that, I made a, a direct call to Hazeltine to ask them to come to the meeting and ask them, in fact, if we could hold our meeting at the clubhouse. Um, spoke with an individual there, didn't get a very strong response, but they didn't also come to the neighborhood meeting. So, since then, I think Nate or Liz was encouraging me to continue to get a dialogue going with Hazeltine. And we have, um, connected with two or three individuals, uh, officers of the club. They've invited me to come speak with them next Wednesday, kind of show them what our concept looks like. And, you know, have a dialogue and share ideas about what our plan looks like. So, I don't know what the outcome of that will be yet, but at least we've got conversation going with them. Um, while I have the floor, I'll let, let you know that I have taken the input that we gathered from the planning commission meeting and passed that along to our designers, architect and civil engineer, letting them know how important that traffic circulation was, will be. How important the parking organization is gonna be and what we can do to make sure it's, um, well-directed and laid out well. The access, not the access, but the parking approximate to the Kohl's store needs to be delineated such that it's not too convenient for retail customers to use the apartment lot to use the store. So, we're working on those things right now, but I wanted to gather more from the council before we, um, revised our plan much further. I think that's the update that I have for now. Um, with one more thing. Was there a setback from hundred mark that you're still looking for us to observe, that we're not quite fifty feet or something?
There, there is a setback from hundred mark. I don't recall what that number is.
Yeah, a hundred feet from the center line.
Hundred from the center line, we're not quite there, so we need to move things around a little bit.
I think we'll just need to make sure that the preliminary, that it, that it's accounted for.
Yeah.
I don't know if it was clear on the concept plan of Kohl's.
Uh, it's not very clear, but I think I remember from the architect saying we're probably eighty-eight or eighty-five, something like that, so, alright.
Would you, would the, has, well, my, maybe the other question is, has there been consideration of what this would look like as mixed use? Like residential and like a restaurant? Like I think of in Eden Prairie, what's that pizza place that's like connected to residential? No, Chicag- old Chicago? I can't think of it. Yeah, that's kind of like, they have the residential and that's always really nice. I have friends that live there and really like it and that brings in a restaurant. I don't know if that's been considered.
We've not been a big fan of that for a couple of reasons. The observation we have about apartments, apartment complexes, communities that have a first-floor retail really seem to struggle to keep those retail tenants there all the time. There seems to be always a lot of turnover there. It adds to the, um, uh, management efforts to, to control that and to manage that and lease that. It, it, um, sometimes doesn't look the best from, from a residential standpoint. And then when it comes to restaurants, there's always the food cooking order that's very hard to control. I have seen it work some, some places. I think there's even a place in my hometown of St. Cloud where Comfort Inn has an adjacent restaurant. It's distinctly separate but connected to the hotel. Um, but there, they're able to really distinguish their own identity. They're not mixed in with the building itself. And they can control their traffic, control their food order and so forth. So, that works pretty well for them. Old Chicago started there with that. They didn't make it. So, one of the local, uh, pizza places came in to go with their store. But we're not a big fan of trying to integrate first-floor retail with, with residential. I think it just complicates things too much, both from a parking, access, marketability. Um, it's something we haven't really been a strong supporter of.
I don't disagree with you on that because I know that unless, it, the first-floor retail tends to only work in really highly urban or areas, right?
Get really bad special.
Like St. Louis Park.
It almost says it's the best retail location, but let's put housing on top of it, just because.
Because even like in St. Louis Park, there was that large development that was on, uh, on, how, on seven, I think. That had like, there was a, you were the, there's like a Trader Joe's and a T-Mobile store and a bunch of stuff. They sell Cerrito, right? And that one took a long time to populate that. And then that was like a prime real estate too, right along seven. Um, and so, you know, I, and we have a similar challenge with, um, in, um, over in, um, over by, across the street from, um, Clover Ridge.
Yeah, Cloverfield Marketplace.
Marketplace, that one still has.
Yeah, to be honest, I think we've struggled with that in most of the mixed-use buildings we've had.
And it, exactly.
That's a very different spot.
I was gonna say that, I would not at all compare.
Very residential, but I, I get it.
I guess I'm thinking about the, some of our downtown locations. So, like originally, uh, now it's Zen. Uh, but, uh, used to be River Gables, uh, had a lot more commercial that was associated with it. Now, Michael's Cycles has found a nice niche in there, but that's, that's really struggle.
Yeah.
Mixed use in a suburban area is really tough.
Yeah, and that's where, that's why I was saying, you know, I, I'm okay with that because, you know, the model that, you know, just having it residential. But across the parking lot against the Kohl's building, leave some space because I believe, I fully believe, and like I said, I'm looking at this in the long term. I'm not, it may not be immediate, but at some point in the future, someone's gonna come back and say, I think there's a space there, I'm gonna open something there. I can tell you what it is today, but I'm also guarantee you, I'd bet you a hundred bucks today, within like, you know, a certain, some, some period of time, someone's gonna wanna open something ag- against the wall of that building. And it'd be good to plan for that now. Can't tell you what it'd be, but it'll happen.
I, I appreciate that. I was also gonna suggest maybe one of the case studies would be, uh, sort of what's evolving around the Southdale and a Galleria areas. I've been noticing that where they once had a parking lot expansion space. Yeah, apartments are gonna up there too, so, uh, I'm sure they're figuring out how to coordinate the parking and the traffic and, 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 and the mixed uses between the two uses there.
Yeah.
The comment I was gonna make is a little bit of a different perspective when you think of long-term. You know, I will say, I'm not a market analyst or study and I don't shop a lot. I worry about the long-term viability of the Kohl's building there, to be a hundred percent honest, right? I just actually Googled it. There was active investors trying to take over. They've been in the news. I worry about that long-term. This may or may not play into that game, right? Um, but one thing that this store doesn't have that others may be using, not connected to a mall, right? So, if you're thinking about changes, so, okay. So, if that happened in the long-term, what we could go here that would continue to support the other surrounding businesses? And residential and high, kind of high-density residential does that, right? You know, you would have a grocery store right there, you got restaurants. Um, you know, so that's kind of where my head is, you know, it took me a while to get there, to be honest, because it's like, I think, you know, we all kind of share the concern like, ooh, this is, this is a retail spot, now we're thinking about residential. But I, I, I do think long-term trend, I don't think it's completely out of the question that this space in the future is all high-density, uh, residential.
I don't know, population is decreasing. There's gonna be less people in the world. We don't wanna have kids anymore. We want dogs.
Well, high, high residential has great dog parks in this space, but.
Plan for the dog.
But I just like, I look at that because like I know we're, we're attaching it to that, that current owner of that building. But you know, when you look at that long-term, I, I worry about that, that long-term.
I, I gotta be honest, is from a staff perspective, we get more concerned about that than we do about what we're talking about right now.
Because if that goes out, that building's empty for a while.
I mean, the, the, the challenge and we're seeing it in community after community is that big box is not surviving. And.
But you can return Amazon there now, so another line is like pretty good, long at times.
Yeah, I mean, Kohl's has done a good job of divesting and partnerships and, you know, one, you know, I do think, like I said, the Amazon partnership's interesting because one that you.
You get a five-dollar coupon and I go spend that five-dollar coupon every time.
And you get a ten percent off Kohl's, right?
But I, I completely, I, I probably read the same articles as you too, because I mean, like the, the concerns with retail and, and this particular case, Kohl's. You know, the viability of those is, you know, on, on the long-term, you know, it's, it's kind of, it's a, it's a calculated gamble, right? So, can you count on Kohl's being there ten years from now? Not necessarily. I mean, I give it maybe like a seventy percent chance. But, you know, there's still, you know, but even at that, you know, sixty, seventy percent chance, but there's still a thirty, forty percent chance Kohl's may not be the user there at some point. Which means that one of two things is gonna happen. It'll sit vacant looking for a tenant and then you'll have apartments across the parking lot or someone.
The apartments won't affect that.
No, the apartments won't affect it, but it's more just the fact that you'll have pardon, apartments across the parking lot from a vacant building. Um, or at some point, someone says, you know, either you find a new tenant or it just gets razed and something else new gets built there. What that happens to be, it's anybody's guess at this point because that's way too far in the future. But the, I think the question being is that, you know, if we're setting up something for residential now, knowing what's there today, right? And I think that's what we're dealing with. The cards we have are, we have a Kohl's there today that seems to be doing okay. There's no immediate signs that it's in, in dire jeopardy or anything like that. But that can change like in a week from now or the next, like, you know, news headline that comes from s- some, like from Bloomberg or whatever it is. Um, we don't really know, but the question is, does this work for what we've got today?
Yeah, and then the other comment I will just make, uh, and then I really don't have much more to say about this swiftly. Um, is this model of high-density residential and large retail is one that's already on our radar? Which, because we've already put concept plans and that's the Oakridge area, right? That's exactly what that is. It's a large, big-box retail next to apartment complexes. So, we know it can work. We know there's, or, well, we think we can work. There's the man for it, right? So, it's not like this would be a precedent that doesn't exist in the city, right? And so, I just point that out because I think that is another example where that owner and developer said, you know, we could have this big traffic generator next to, to apartment complexes and, and whatnot. And, and that's a similar model that this sets itself up to be.
And it is a trend that you've seen with malls. I mean, that's, I mean, there is no question when you look at Eden Prairie Mall, Southdale. I know Burnsville was just in the, the news last week talking about it. I mean, that has been a strategy that retail centers have tried to use to remain viable, is to put as much housing around, as possible. Um, you know, I think in Southdale, what that's led to is that they have more entertainment type stuff. You know, they have more restaurants, more entertainment. I don't know that they have any more stores. In fact, I think they've probably lost stores. Um, but, uh, but they've, they've been able to attract more entertainment that way, uh, by having residential. But there's no question that that trend is happening in all the suburban communities now that residential is, is wanting to locate, uh, well. I don't know which one's wanting it more, but they are locating it, they are locating it next to, to big re- uh, retail areas.
Well, I think that the other trend we're seeing is that like large boxes or shopping centers or shop, large malls, for example, are reconfiguring to do what you can't do online, right? So, you can, you can't eat online, you can't get, you can't go have an experience, like a non-virtual experience online, right? So, you know, things like the Dave and Buster's are still strong, you know, like movie theaters, you know, outside of.
Dave and Buster's? Sorry, go on.
I'm just, you know, in terms of like a, from a business perspective, I mean, at least, you know, there's still, there's still, I mean, there's like, you look at Southdale as an entertainment destination. They're, they're trying to reinvent themselves. The Entertainment Mall of America is doing the same thing too in a much larger scale.
We're getting off track here.
Yeah, I, I don't think, I don't think it's wrong to have.
Starting to wander here.
I don't think it's, I don't think it's weird to have or bad to have residential here. I've never been concerned about putting, mixing that. I just think it's a really special corner that's gonna get a whole lot more special when the loop is finished and a whole lot more special when Costco is done. And is this the right thing to put there? I, I mean, I have zero problem with it being residential. I just think that it's a very, very visible corner for some things that draw people to our community.
Yep. I think they do appreciate that. Assuming the examples that you provided, the architecture is kind of, you're shooting for that scale or that, that quality level.
Correct.
Then, you know, I think that's, you know, that's apropos for what we're, what we're looking for in this area.
If we get the cost of construction under control a bit, it would be much simpler, of course.
That's, that's a little different story, right?
I would like a rooftop party area.
I mean, I came into this not, I just felt that this is a retail spot, that one of the few that we have left right now and concerned about that, but listening to the comments, um, this is making probably more sense to go this route. I was gonna say put the, you know, the retail underneath, but now they're saying that's not making it. I mean, because that's what kind of was going everywhere. I mean, not big ones, but smaller ones for smaller businesses. But if you're saying that that's a battle, I mean, obviously, whatever we do here, we wanna be successful. And we certainly don't wanna put something in. And, and obviously, the site sat empty for a long time and nobody's biting at it now either. Um, I, I, I don't know, it, it's, it was not my first choice, but I've, after listening to the conversation, maybe it is the right thing to do. I, I'm, I'm with you. I think that there's, I still feel that we need a hotel. And what I think makes us, uh, a, a, a good hotel site is you have food options right there within walking distance, which helps that. You have amenities around there. Um, I get that hotels are built on interchanges. That's just life in general. I mean, but there are also hotels that thrive at our destinations. Um, and I don't know if there's a, a way to do that. I'm, I am, I feel that we are in dire need of a hotel.
I can promise you we are. I don't understand that.
We have nothing right now.
Yep.
And that's probably why that everybody around us is booked, because we have nothing.
Literally, like, if there's ten vegetarian menus I can think of right now that I dread when they say, where am I gonna get my room block? I hide under my desk because even all the way out to Mare and Wacoña and Victoria are gonna win hotels. I hide under my desk, because even, all the way out to mayor, and Wacoania and Victoria are gonna win hotels, and that's silly. It makes me so mad, Wacoania, the things Wacoania and Victoria are gonna get, because we can't figure it out here, but that's another story.
But anyways, uh, you know, I, I guess that, I think this is worth, you know, obviously, there's been a lot of comments here, I think it's worth moving it in, uh, through the concept, and see what you come back with about traffic flows and this and that, and the different things. Uh, I know we seem to worry a lot about parking and traffic. I mean, look at the old malls, they had long freeways. It, it's, I, I don't, I don't worry about that crossing that one roadway to get to the building, I don't think that that's, is that critical. I think it's something worth looking at, but I don't think.
Yeah.
Certainly not by any means a deal breaker in my eyes, but.
I'd like the idea, frankly, I'm gonna look at the architect.
What's that?
The idea of having the main entrance to the, to the apartment on the south side of that driveway.
Yep.
Probably makes a lot of sense.
Yeah.
So we're gonna look at that pretty carefully and see if that works.
And like I said, it, it just, it wasn't what I looked at coming in here and reading and going through it, but listening to the conversation, it might be the best use of the site at this point. Um, and I hope we don't regret it at some day, but if we put a quality product there, uh, that's the key, that it's always gonna be successful as well. Mike, good to see you, I haven't seen you in a while.
Good to see you as well.
My condolences about your father-in-law.
Thank you.
So, um, but I, I don't know, I, I, I'm not sure we've all got our opinions here. I mean, is this something, otherwise, we're gonna be here until two.
Any other questions that, that may?
Do we wanna move forward with concept here, or are we not ready for a concept of this?
What do you, you mean preliminary?
Well, this is concept, isn't it?
So, yeah, so there's, as a con, so.
Do we wanna move it forward as?
So they can look at a preliminary?
That, that they can move forward to a preliminary?
Yeah, I mean, I think we all said that, you know, there are just certain things that probably just need to be tidied up, but I don't think anybody's outright ho.
I think, yeah, I'm not opposed to it at all. I do, like I said, it's a special corner, and I'm hoping that what we see is, looks special and feels special.
Yep.
I would want to feel something.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm in the same boat too. I mean, it's like, this quarter is like, I mean, it, it's good, it's the, this quarter is also the, and is part of the entranceway to Hazelton National Golf Course, right? So the, all the players that come in for the next Ryder Cup, all of the, a lot of the visitors that come in for Ryder Cup, they're gonna see this as one of the things as their entranceway, so it better darn well be looking good, because I think it's gonna be, it's gonna reflect in our community a lot.
Be better than what they saw last time.
So, yeah, two.
You know, I, I, I think you guys had, I think you guys had the absolute right conversation for this. I mean, that, that is, that was the question here. And, and, I mean, Mike's right, I mean, we've talked about this for the last few years, and, I mean, we, we've probably come to you with some wishes too, saying, couldn't it just be this, or couldn't it just be this? And he sort of kicked some reality in us, I think, after a while. But I mean, it, it's the same questions we've been asking for a long time on the site too, because you, you don't want to give up on it, but it, it's, it, things are different now. They're, they definitely have changed.
And like I said, you know, I'm, the only thing I'm asking for is just leave enough, like, room there that at some day, when you, when someone does want to build against that wall, they could, right? Not saying you have to build it now, just leave something, leave it, leave it there. Make sure it's available, so that when someone wants to do it, you guys can sell it. Because I'm sure you want to make that money at that point too.
I appreciate you telling us what we don't know, like, because we sometimes act like we do know up here. So it's always good to hear someone who's connected and understands the, the realities, because, I'll try to never pretend I know that, but sometimes we like to throw ideas, and you're like, yep, thought of that, thought of that, thought of that. So appreciate your, your advice and feedback.
It's a challenging site, and the, the dialogue is important, uh, it has been important. Matt, how late, or how recent was that hotel study? Did you do that a few years ago, or did?
Oh, it was prior to Oak Ridge closing and.
Prior to the pandemic.
And.
It was prior to the pandemic.
Yeah.
It was, uh, it was the same time that Norwood, it was right before Norwood.
Honestly, it was twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen.
It was right after you, it was right after you came to the city, and you've been here for five years, so I'd say twenty seventeen.
Yeah, so about twenty. So that's a, that's a lot of time, I mean, it's, and quite, quite a bit's changed since then.
Well, and.
If I had a mill, I'd do that one right now.
Yeah. The, uh, um, you know, to, to me, think, you know, again, Oak Ridge is open, I think they always sort of looked at Oak Ridge differently.
They counted, they counted the rooms.
Yeah.
But the rooms weren't really.
No, they weren't.
They were more of dorms for IDS than they were.
I would say the only thing that's probably hurt since then is that Holiday Inn Express is kind of closed. But they are rude there, so.
Holiday Inn what?
Express in Chanhassen.
Yeah.
A bunch of rudy-toody's are really nice hotel, but.
That was their highway five, right?
Oh, it was? Okay. Oh, that would be true, because I worked at the dark and almost.
It's the one on highway five, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That closed?
I'm sorry, what?
No, they said they're rude.
They're rude.
Rude.
No, I, I mean, I do think it, it, it's probably worth updating that to, to look at it, because things have changed. But there were some fundamental things that they were really concerned about with the different sites that we had in town. My sense was that they really liked the freeway. You know, that, you know, I do think that, I do think County Road forty-four and two twelve ends up being a location that you could see until.
And without, without a doubt, but I still think that if you're traveling and you Google for hotels, if it's a nice hotel, you'll drive a mile off the road.
Yeah.
Right, and.
That's not a prob, like I said.
Because even the ones off one sixty-nine are not easy to get to off one sixty-nine.
They're super hard to get to.
The ones that are on.
But they're visible.
They are. I, I mean, I think the last big hotel.
But we live online, you don't need to be visible, you need to be Googleable.
There's the other thing, there's also, you know, it's also the Chaska Business Parks and stuff, so, I mean, there's, there, you know, there's not, I mean, it's not a huge business park, but within Chaska, between what we're developing and what we have today, there's a growing demand for, you know, someplace to stay for business travelers during the week, and as well as, you know, for, you know, people having events too, so.
I think, yeah, there's the event center, there's the curling center, the arboretum's getting bigger.
Yep.
Yeah, we made it clear enough that we really want a hotel.
I would love to build you one, right?
Yeah.
Anyways, like, okay.
So, I, I don't know, I don't know what we do here, so, because we're, like I said, we're never gonna end this.
I think, I think the important thing is you guys provided feedback.
Yep.
And, you know, we've been keeping track of the feedback as far as the things that are, uh, most important to you guys to discuss, and I think, I think that's the whole intent of the concept plan, is to say, you know, is this something that you feel that you could support in general to move forward? Yes or no? And then what are the things that you really want to be looked at as, as you're going through? And I think you guys provided that in your comments.
So I'll drive, I mo, I make a motion to adopt resolution twenty-two-two-nine, approving the concept plan for Hazelton Plaza Apartments slash Tredon Development.
So question before we approve it, or?
No, we got a motion, we have to get a second.
I'll second it, I'll second it.
So we have a motion by Gra, second by Hubbard, to, uh, adopt twenty-two-two-nine, no comments.
Okay, so question, so, so with this, could you also look, I mean, I'm not saying you would change it, but could you, you could also look at it as potentially like a hotel using the same configuration building, correct? Under the same concept? Just asking for a hypothetical.
You mean where a hotel footprint fit?
No, I think, I think what Congressman Wong is asking is, is it conceivable for you to look at the, uh, concept of looking at a hotel there as well as an apartment? Or in lieu of an apartment?
Yeah, Mayor, Members Council, um, Tredon Development is, specializes in multifamily rental properties. Uh, we, we're not equipped to, uh, change course to, to hospitality property there, we don't have the skill and the knowledge. I mean, yes, I used to do it seven years ago with a different company, and believe me, it's a whole different world. Uh, the bigger question is, would, would, would the landowner prefer to sell it for that use rather than for housing use? That's where the decision would be made.
So at this point, the land hasn't changed hands yet?
Correct, no.
So, so this is, so part, so part of the conversation is, is with Kohl's being okay with what you guys are proposing, as well as the landowner saying that you're okay with doing it as whatever's being proposed in the concept?
Mike's the landowner.
Mike's the landlord.
So, yeah, okay, so you're, Mike, so you're selling it, okay, got it, never mind.
For us, there's two, there's three critical things. Uh, the, one, one would be the critical thing was, is, is city council on board with changing the land use? Number two, is Kohl's gonna give us approval to modify that REA and allow for our concept? And three, we want to be good neighbors, so we want to make sure that Hazelton, uh, supports our development as well, because we don't want a lot of conflict with our neighbor like that.
Yeah, which is fine.
That's what we're working together, hopefully, when, and if we come back with a preliminary, we'll have those, those answers and those solutions.
Yep. So at this point, you, at this point, the hotel's off the table, but, but I was curious, because Mike, you asked the question about the, about the, the last time we did a, um, when the hotel study was done, that's why I was kind of curious where you were going with that.
Well, and that was kind of a leading question, I wanted to see how recent it was, because I know that it's only gotten worse.
Yeah, and it's.
So if they, if you, if you could provide the council with that report, um, you know, I, all I know is that since two thousand seventeen, it's just gotten worse.
It's gotten worse, like people are, everyone, so there was a huge swing to Airbnb. Airbnb charges so many fees now, so as a traveler, I can tell you that I stay in hotels again. We swung to Airbnbs and we're swinging back to hotels, so, I don't know. Like I said, I, there is, I, we see it every day, I don't know where, where the difference is between developers and the people that are in the space, but, and that's not to comment on you at all, I'm just saying, that's what, yeah, I just can't imagine, people are staying in hotels still, so.
You're right, there's still lodging industry is still, you know.
Yeah.
Making it, um. I think what Mike's trying to say is, where newer lodging development will first occur are those locations where they have freeway visibility. And so to think that they're gonna come in here first and say, put down a flag, um, when there's opportunity to go elsewhere in town where they've got freeway visibility, they'll probably choose the latter before they do this. The first assessment?
Yeah, yeah, proximity to airport and jobs, companies, or headquarters, they're all driving factors.
Yeah, but I was, I was here when we did that, that hotel assessment, because I was in planning commission during the time we did that, and it was a, it was frustrating, because I knew that, you know, it's one of those things where, like, I think we see things as like residents and as, as users, and then at the same time, like, the numbers kind of don't match.
Business owners, you gonna throw that in there?
Savvy business owners, yes. Yes.
I, I don't think it's impossible we get a hotel in town, I just don't think it's gonna be here. I, I, I really think that.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
I honestly think, I mean, I've seen Victoria's talked about a, a hotel over with their new development area. I think our location out at forty-four and two twelve is a significantly better site than that.
Maybe something, you know, on the checkbox of other things we need to start marketing towards, right?
Yeah, and, and that's something that the landowner is very aware of, uh, out there, and has been, I mean, that's part of their marketing plan too, is to talk to users like that.
Okay, sounds good, so, I'm good.
So, kind of abruptly stopped, and we could move forward.
Yeah, I, my motion, my second still stands.
We needed to come to a conclusion here, because it was going in too many different directions, so. I don't want to stop anybody from having something they want to have set, so. If we're all good, we have a motion and a second to approve the concept for twenty-two-two-two-nine, approving concept for Hazelton Plaza Apartments. We're all good with that. Let's go back to consent part. All right, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post them sign. Done.
Thanks.
Thanks, guys. All right, uh, Bills, question on Bills?
A couple of quick questions, can't keep it short. Uh, page five, um, there's one for Carver County Facility Services for the gun range, so clean up. So I understand, I'm guessing it's for the police department's use of the gun range and.
Yeah, so it's actually the Shram property.
It was a Shram property.
Yeah, so when we bought that property, um, both Carver County and the Chaska Police for years had used that little area when you were coming in, going back as, uh, property. It's actually, it was actually the Carlson's property, uh, that, that owned it, and so we needed to clean that up as a part of the.
But we shared that?
So we shared it fifty-fifty with them.
So this was.
Fifty?
So is this, so this is a one-time thing?
Yeah, it's.
It's not like we're, okay.
Yeah.
Got it. Second question is page nine, um, is, there's an item for Fitch and Associates, um, the dispatch study, so, can't remember what this was for, it's like, was Chaska fire or police?
No, this is, it's fire and police, it was a study that we did, uh, in conjunction with the city of Chanhassen, Chaska, and Carver County Sheriff's Department. And it was really looking at both our fire and, uh, police for dispatch, and looking at, um, you know, is the model working, uh, right? And what are suggestions that come out of that study to, you know, basically things that should be implemented at the dispatch side, uh, to be able to make sure that, you know, especially as our fire services change, that we're having dispatching that's able to meet those needs to, to meet the service model.
Okay, gotcha, so it's, it, basically, we're looking at the dispatch as kind of an interconnected service model between, um, between Carver County as well as Chaska.
And Chanhassen.
Yep. Okay, got it. And then the last one was on page twenty-two, it was the StanTech, um, there's a StanTech, um, evaluation of seminary fen, because I know some, I know what seminary fen is, but I was wondering why we're looking at seminary fen.
So, uh, we've done projects out there before, so there's multiple ravines that go into the seminary fen. And so the watershed districts will provide grants to actually, uh, do the work to stop with erosion and everything that destroys the fans. And so every time we get a project, uh, funded, get it done, then we move on to deal with an extra ravine system. And so this is basically the, the work that needs to be up, done upfront, to basically create a project that we can then go get a grant from the watershed district to be able to make the improvements and, and clean the water that's going into the fen.
So we've kind of, like, progressively taken a chunk of this watershed and do analysis as we're able to?
It's basically, it's the ravines coming off of our property, uh, that we, we continue to, to sort of take those off in chunks, one project at a time.
Gotcha, okay, so, so some progress, so we progressively sort of, you know, chip away at that?
Yep.
So, so we have property that goes into the Senate?
Property that, uh, was gonna be the old forty-one crossing. We own everything almost going all the way up that bluff.
Wait, wait, which bluff?
Uh, in between Chan and Chaska, sort of comes down where the river crossing was gonna be originally. So.
Yeah, well, basically, uh, it's a little bit, well, it's just a little bit east of current Audubon.
Yeah, so you.
Right about the curve where two twelve goes.
Yeah.
But it, it would have been right through, uh, River View, and that got stopped.
Yeah, so years ago, there was a study done, uh, back when we purchased property for two twelve back in the early nineties. There's power lines that go up it right now. Uh, we actually, through the Ralph program, through the Met Council, got dollars to go and purchase all that property up there to preserve right away. Subsequently, the, uh, MINDOC came back and did a study and said the highway would not go there, and one of the big reasons was the River View Terrace, another one was the seminary fen. There was all these reasons why they didn't do it, but we still own the property.
Oh, gotcha, so we sold a chunk of property in that area that was originally meant for that, but then the, so, just like the runoff from that, that's polluting the watershed, they cleaned up.
Yep.
Wow, gotcha.
I didn't even know that stuff was still.
Wow, okay.
All right.
So we're getting grants, so we're trying to get grants to.
Yep, we've been, every time we've done a project, it's been a grant-supported project.
Gotcha, okay, cool, well, that's educational, well, thank you.
Yeah.
That's all I got.
I got one quick one. Page twenty-three, and I didn't talk to, uh, but there, it talks about library elevator was eleven thousand dollars, and there was something else eleven thousand dollars. Does the library have an elevator?
Yes.
There's two in here?
There's two elevators, there's one back over here, and there's one over here. So the entrance on that side of the building was required to have an elevator to serve that second floor.
Can we see it?
I don't know that I've ever seen it.
We talked about it when we did the tour, I thought.
Yeah, yeah, it's, yeah, a lot. Yeah, yeah, it's, yeah, a lot of people don't see it. They, they use it for all their, uh, you know, they have the inner library home systems. So they have book drops and bring it up.
I need a tour of the building.
That side of it.
All right, anyone else?
Um, moved to approve?
Motion to pay the bill?
So moved.
Motion by council member Wong.
Oh, second.
Second by council member Hatfield to pay the bills discussion. Hearing none, Elise, you co-roll?
Council member Hatfield?
Yes.
Council member Hubbard?
Yes.
Council member Wong?
Aye.
Council member Grau?
Aye.
Erin Schittl?
Yes. All right, moves us to other business. Uh, let's start with council member Grau.
Uh, just one, I'm going to pull it from the, um, bi-weekly, uh, because I just love seeing employee years of service recognition. Was unable to attend it, but just was great to see the names. And I think, you know, quite a few individuals, up to thirty years, which is awesome. You know, I just want to say thank you to all of those individuals. I think we're in a market right now where over the several years, tenure, and people staying at jobs is, is becoming less and less of a common trend. People move a lot more. But it just again demonstrates that if you're a company or an organization or a city that's doing the right things, working with the right people, and, and hiring good people, that people stay around. So just like to thank, you know, those individuals for their years of service as well as just, you know, continue to how that demonstrates of, of a well-run organization, the city of Chaska. And that is all I have.
Thank you, Mike.
Um, you got a few things. I, I echo, uh, council member Grau's comments. You know, I think that just says that this speaks volumes to the longevity of the staff that, you know, with the, the positive culture that's been created here within, within the city. That any good organization has a good culture, really, it shows in retention. And I think it speaks volumes to that and the leadership here. So, you know, thank you to all the employees and all of the staff who have like, you know, really worked hard to create that, that real, that really positive culture. So, I see a number of events here, April twenty-first to twenty-third, we have the open house at MSB. So thank you guys for like, you know, putting that together. I think that's like really important to, you know, to have those events for the community and to help share some of the things that we need in terms of challenges that will help to, uh, you know, help to, you know, build that, uh, build that education and awareness and support that we'll need. May seventh, the Jonathan Spring Cleanup Day, so, um, you know, that's something to get all that, that stuff out there on the curb in Jonathan. Likewise, Jonathan, on May fourteenth, the Jonathan Festival of Garage Sales is taking place as an annual basis. And May eleventh, a Chase of Chaska, and July twenty-ninth is River City Day. So it's kind of nice to see like a bunch of stuff all hitting the calendar. So getting really excited that we're starting to like, you know, get a lot more things going here in town. Congratulations to Sub-Zero Team Kurzall, right? So that was like a very personal matter. I'm sure you'll probably talk about that some more too, but.
Yep, they, uh, so Team Kurzall basically won the, it's equivalent like the state high school, uh, trophy for, for the city of Chaska. So, uh, the other thing they did this last weekend is they won the Golden Broom back from St. Paul. So that's like a, it's a, it's a competition between St. Paul Curling Club and, and Chaska Curling Club. And, uh, now there's been three competitions. Chaska's had it twice and they've had it once, so.
So it's like a, it's an actual gold broom?
Well, it's a broom with gold scraping on it.
I was gonna say, like, is it little? Is it big?
Yeah, yeah. So there'll be two new trophies that will be, uh, out in display. The, the high school one is huge. It's just like this huge cup. And it's got the names of like going back in time, like John Schuster's team and, uh, Chris Plies team. So all these people you see in the Olympics now, back when they're in high school, they won the same trophy. So it's, it's pretty cool.
Yep, um, so also want to, you know, just say that, you know, I saw the red in the, um, the bi-weekly that, and the power program that, um, that Officer Jenke and Chief Seibert are, you know, putting together, pulling together. It's like really exciting to be able to help those special, you know, special needs students and to help, you know, get them, um, skills and experience. Also, a shout out for the hot pride. Um, so I, the, because we're running pretty late here, I don't want to necessarily take your time and read all of this. But it was included in the, um, in the, um, the, uh, the minutes for the, or the minutes for the meeting or the agenda for the meeting tonight. So there's a sheet that kind of outlines a lot of the achievements for the arts, athletics and activities from Chaska High School students and some of the things that are going on within the school. So I want to give a shout out to all the, the students and the, the staff and faculty here doing such a great job there. Also, and finally, I want to give a quick update for Southwest Transit. So we're currently going through our interview process for a new CEO. We've interviewed five candidates and we've had second interviews for three of the five candidates. Narrowed it down to a pool of two that we were willing to bring in for, um, for finals. Um, and then the leading candidate, number one, dropped out. So, which kind of leads us to the position where like the second candidate was like, well, was sort of a okay candidate, but we're not feeling like really strong, strongly at this point. So we're having some other conversations about increasing the candidate pool, um, to, you know, bring in a richer slate of candidates. And I think that, um, the consulting firm Kale Two Consulting is, um, has good direction in terms of what we're looking for. So we're hoping to be able to do a second round of candidates. But we'll just have to see how long we're able to get a, a richer pool that will give us more of what we're looking for. Um, and also keeping some of the candidates we have currently in play. So, um, that's ongoing. So it's, some of the, some of the fun stuff we're going through, um, as well as, um, and also one of the other things too that I heard today that, um, um, Matt Fein, who's our, uh, our interim CEO, was talking about how prime service almost doubled in the past month. So we've actually had a huge spike in volume of like prime usage, which is really positive. The thing to be, thing to note is that while prime services went up significantly, when, as the service needs ramp up for express service, there's going to be some interesting calls to make because, you know, we only have a finite amount of funding, so there's, there's maybe interesting play of like, okay, which one we start to ramp up and how do we start to ramp up the express service back to downtown while supporting the prime service. Right now it's not an issue. We have enough to, you know, support the growth as we're growing. But something that we're out to kind of keep an eye out for as we start ramping this up, so. But overall, good news that, um, that prime service is really taking off and we're expanding services in terms of airport service. And we're looking at potentially expanding north as well as, we're currently doing the four ninety-four corridor down to like Mall of America, Dyna, that area, Prime MD. But we're also looking towards, you know, north, um, to like, um, you know, Wayzata, Ridgedale kind of thing as well. And maybe some, um, other, um, business and job centers up there, so. That's what we got going. Lots happening over there in, on the prime side, or in the Southwest Transit side.
Cool.
All right, that's all I got.
Thank you. Ms. Taylor?
Yeah, uh, I guess following in the footsteps of the other council members, just echo the wonderful employee appreciation, uh, breakfast. It's great to see, yeah, the longevity, but it's also great to see just the transitions, like you two lovely folks still in here, coming in, stepping into new roles, stepping into, into the city staff. And also just a, like a nice shout out to you, man. I always like your presentations, always just getting me all fired up over all the incoming projects coming into, to Chaska.
They're all sleeping, so.
It's just like, gets a, well, he does like his overview of things and it's like exciting, you know? So anyways.
They're sleeping? I don't get it.
They just think I'm boring.
So I was listening.
You gotta hear them every day.
Yeah. The second thing is, so, um, just, uh, I am one of the newest graduates of the, uh, Citizens Academy, Police Academy here. Um, just completed the, the last, toured the, um, Carver County Jail last week. Uh, I don't know, have any of you guys toured this?
Yeah.
You've not toured it?
Nope.
You should tour it.
I want to tour on my own.
Yeah, I mean, it's, um, you know, I mean, they were like, has anybody been here? But I think the, the neat thing was, it was twofold. It was, you know, you got to listen to the city or the county attorney speak, you know, in regards to his role with everything. But also just tour, tour the facility. And I will say, like, I mean, not that anybody wants to be in jail, you know, um, it's a very nice jail.
It's surprisingly nice.
And it's nice as in like, not just like it's clean and, you know, comfortable for those who have to be there, but just, it's dignified. I don't know if that makes sense. Like if you're there, it's, it's, you're, it's done with dignity, so, um.
I might say that personally. I don't of, often go to jail, but when I do.
And they were playing like the recruitment, you know, for, for folks to work there.
Free to go, oh, I.
No, they, no.
Well, free healthcare.
No, to work there, but, uh, but I mean, just all in all, just an overview of the whole Citizens Academy. Just a great program, got to learn. But the, the other great thing, like Officer Petrick over here, like, was one of the speakers talking about, uh, you know, traffic stops patrol. But you just, you got to engage, you got to see, you got to, you know, touch some of the weapons, I guess. You got to see them fire a, uh, what do you call it, um, taser and see what the wires look like.
Back in the old days, it used to, like, you used to get tased.
Yeah, um, no, nothing like that though, but, you know, I mean, it just, uh, just a lot of really information, a lot of, a lot, very informative. It's like eleven twenty, but I'll stop talking about it. But, um, just really great. I'm glad that of all the hard work, all of you at Chaska PD take your time out of your busy lives to come down, talk to all of us. Thank you, and thanks to Julie for putting it on because it's a lot of work. So, yeah, that's it for me. Oh, other than the summer guide for the Chaska Community Center and the Parks and Rec came out. So there's like echoing council member Wong, there's a lot of really cool things coming up on the calendar. So it's very exciting to see things come back.
Oh, shout out the really great Twitter meme about that that was sent out today by someone behind the wall here. Of the video of getting the, finding your perfect class and excitement, so.
Oh.
Check Chaska Twitter.
I'm not on Twitter.
Check Chaska Twitter if you want to see it.
I just shout out to the.
Brought a smile to my day.
To the cover model on that, uh, that guy. He's like, pretty cute. Anyways.
I saw that as well.
You know.
You're good?
Yeah.
There's Coffee with a Cop on Thursday at Caribou at nine AM. And that's all I have. Besides, if anybody wants to build a hotel, my number is on the website.
I'm still hoping for a Trader Joe's.
I've given up on Trader Joe's because there's going to be one in Eagan by my office. I just want a hotel now.
A hotel with a Trader Joe's on it.
Yeah.
All right, Nate, you got anything? Elise?
I got two things, two quick things. First of all, uh, we do have the second round of interviews for our fire chief position on, uh, Tuesday, April fifth in the evening, and then Wednesday, April sixth in the evening. We have three candidates that we're bringing back. I was going to throw it out, it'd be great to have two council members, uh, be a part of that. Basically, they present to the, uh, each candidate has like an hour in front of the, the group where they present, uh, sort of who they are, what they think they bring to the position, things like that. And then it's really an opportunity for people to ask some questions. Uh, being that it's really publicly facing, uh, position, I thought it'd be, uh, good if a, if a couple of council members would have, uh, time that evening. So if people want to reach out to me and let me know, we can't have more than two, uh, because then we get into opening a lot of issues.
Repeat those evenings again?
Uh, April fifth, which is a Tuesday, and April sixth, which is a Wednesday.
I'm in Seattle.
April fifth and sixth.
Well, that's the other thing I forgot to say. I won't be here at the next meeting.
That was going to be the other thing I was going to bring up. So I, I put in the bi-weekly that we were planning on having the architect come back on April fourth to, to look at the buildings. Trying to do that to, to sort of ha, uh, have some time before the open house to make sure if there's comments, uh, from, from you guys that we make sure we get those incorporated. But as I look at it, we probably still could have, uh, that on April eighteenth instead. I don't know, maybe leave the subset group or Michaela, I mean, uh, should we stick with April fourth? Or would you prefer to wait till the eighteenth when everybody's together to, to talk about that? Or do you want me to meet individually with you?
Well, I thi, I think this building project is a big thing. I think we should all be together.
Okay.
That's my personal opinion.
So what?
If we can wait till the eighteenth, I, I would wait till the eighteenth.
Okay, all right. So we'll still continue with, you know, with that. We probably won't have a lot of ti, the intent of the open houses is to give people the information, but then get back feedback. So if there's like big, major things that you guys have that you're just like, oh, I, we want to make sure that we incorporate this. We may not be able to show it at the open house. But it's more about getting input from people.
Something's really big, you could get that in there.
Yeah.
This might be the ancillary thing to that.
So, it just, just as more of a, a warning with that, but we can still do the April eighteenth and then, uh, and then have the open house after that, so. Okay, that's all I have.
All right. Jake? Anything?
Nothing.
Good. We didn't get in trouble? We didn't mess nothing up today?
Perfect tonight.
All right. Chris, you don't have anything. You want to go home, right?
I'm calling you back here.
All right.
You'd say midnight when you walked in. We didn't get too far.
I only have a couple of things. Have you gotten back to Roxy at Chasers about that island, or has someone?
Yeah, we, yeah, we're working with her.
I talked to her a little bit, but it doesn't sound like.
Well, the, the solution, the solution we're going to come up with, I think, is one that she's going to like.
Okay.
Living in the island.
As long as, I just ran into her and, and needed to ask you if you were, had that, so.
We've met with accounting consultants and, um, they are, Nate's still looking at that, having, keeping the entrance farthest to the west and pulling the median back. I'm sorry, yeah, east, farthest east, and pulling the median back.
Okay.
That or sort of an access he's been through KFC.
Yeah. It, it probably ends up being the first.
It's, it's a bad thing to have to make everybody go up and make a U-turn.
Yeah, we concur.
The, the road's too narrow, you can't do it. And you got people backing up and, and.
Well, they haven't drank it yet, so.
You hope, but I worked at a liquor store.
They buy the roadies, a lot of them.
Yeah, I know. The number of people I turned away when they came to buy April fourth.
What, uh, I got asked, what are we building at Sunset Park? I didn't, I guess if I missed it?
That is a great question because I'm curious too. It looks like poles and dirt.
Is it a batting cage?
Oh, yeah, yeah. Um, so there's a partnership between, uh, City Southwest Christian and, uh, the Chaska Baseball Association to build a batting cage there.
Okay.
I just saw a picture of poles and dirt.
No, it's, it's a batting cage.
And then they asked about, um, paddleboard.
Pickleball.
Oh, pickleball.
Pickleball.
No, this is, this is definitely a batting cage.
No, not that I know of, okay. Uh, lastly, I just want to touch on one of the things in the bi-weekly as well. Uh, I'm sure no one's watching or listening at this point, but, um, we, uh, by actions that we as a council took, uh, a couple of years ago, where we, uh, put extra money in because our fund reserve balance was low, actually did really pay off and it was the right thing to do because it changed our bond rating from, uh, negative to a stable, which in the long run will save this community a lot of money, so.
I probably were in trouble for a second.
I think, no, we're not in trouble. It's a good thing.
It's a good thing.
So it's just one of those that wasn't mentioned and, like I said, it's pretty, you know, that's one of them things that you, you know, sometimes you don't know what, when we do these things, if there's a benefit to it. And that clearly was a benefit, uh, in the long run.
That one will save lots and lots of money over time.
I mean, even though we're still at double A, we were a double A minus or a negative, now we're back to double A stable, which really makes a big difference according to the.
Yeah, I mean, and the reason the negative was is because our fund balance was down.
Right.
And so that was a big deal too.
So, yeah, so, uh, that is it. Last call. We are back on, uh, April fourth, so we're back to our first and third meeting schedule, so remember, bounce it around, no more doubles. All right, I'd entertain a motion if somebody wants to go.
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
I have a motion by council member, uh, Hatfield, second by council member, um, Wong to adjourn. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post name sign. Have a good night. We're adjourned. Thank you. Have a good night. We're adjourned. Thank you.